Good evening Placerville. It is November 13th, 2018 and it's my privilege to call to order the meeting of the City Council. Thank you for being here tonight, welcome. And at this time I'd like to invite you to rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have the roll call please, Ms. Regina?
Vice Mayor Acuna?
Here.
Councilmember Borelli?
Here.
Councilmember Clarici?
Here.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Here.
Mayor Thomas?
Here, thanks, thank you. Now we're on item 3.1, brief comments by the City Council. And I would like to open them up this evening. I know our hearts are all heavy this week, I don't know about you, but I've gone around this week and tried to work, tried to even contemplate the holidays coming up, just heavy with grief over the devastating loss of our neighbors in Paradise. It's just, you know, not even fathomable. And, you know, I was thinking that last week they held an election for their City Council. Two days later their town was gone. And I can't imagine that. And while it could have so easily been us, I think it falls on us all to not only, you know, share in their grief, but it's not enough to grieve and to be with them in their pain. You know, we need to act and we need to show that we're good neighbors. I've reached out to, I have a friend who was the former director a couple of years ago of the Red Cross in Sacramento, and I reached out to her and, you know, said, "I've had a lot of comments, you know, what can we do? What can we, how can we help?" And, you know, people want to get together things. And I reached out to her and I said, "Is that helpful?" And she said, "Really, financial donations are the best way you can help because it takes an extraordinary amount of time and money to sort through stuff that is then brought up there and that stuff has no place to go right now." And so that was a helpful reminder as to what is really helpful. I know that our, our police department sent a couple of police officers up to Paradise and I want to thank them for that help. That's, you know, yeah. Our city manager, absolutely, our city manager's been in coordination with other associations of city managers and of course we've expressed our, you know, anything we can do to them. The mayor of Paradise is the former District 3 Caltrans supervisor for this area. We know Jody, Mayor Jones, and I reached out to her last Friday, I've not heard from her, but that's certainly understandable. But just wanted to let you all know that on the back table, you know, Dennis and I were chatting through all this and saying, you know, "What can we do?" And I know probably a lot of us have donated to the Red Cross and that is awesome and good and, you know, keep that up. But we also thought, how wonderful it would be to make a meaningful donation from El Dorado County to show our solidarity to our neighbors in Paradise. And so a day ago we contacted the El Dorado Community Foundation and within a day they developed a dedicated link to the Camp Fire Donation Page. And this afternoon we launched a social media campaign on Facebook. So look for that, there's flyers in the back with the link to where you can donate. And our goal is to raise $100,000 by the end of November. And all those monies will be funneled through our local El Dorado Community Foundation where 100% of those monies will go toward victims of the campfire. And we will, you know, donate a lump meaningful sum from their neighbors in El Dorado County, just show our solidarity with them.
Who do you give it to?
Um, there's a, there's a link on the backside.
No, 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 I mean, you're, how, where do the funds go? To their, their City Council or?
No, our El Dorado Community Foundation will donate to their foundation which is set up.
Oh, they have a foundation down?
They do, they do, yes. But it will be from El Dorado County.
Okay.
So we were quite amazed that within the first hour, $3,000 had been raised and we've had over 3,000 views in the last two hours on the video. So look for that on our Facebook and the link is in the back. So, you know, thank you for, 4,000, 4,000 views. So, we are a compassionate and caring county and I know our friends in Paradise need us more than ever. So, you know, thank you for helping our neighbors in need. The other announcements that I have, I had the privilege of attending the Veterans Day Celebration on Sunday. It's always a lovely event at the El Dorado County Memorial and it was a privilege to represent the city. In thinking about tonight's council meeting, we were kind of wondering, we had, obviously had an election last, last Tuesday, and wondering what the process would be going forward. Folks are, you know, naturally curious about that. And we reached out to the registrar's office and in reviewing the process for our council transition, we found that over 24,000 ballots still need to be analyzed and counted. And so once we have those certified results, we will seat the new council meeting at that next City Council meeting. So we don't know whether it will be, you know, the end of November or the beginning of December, so we're still waiting for those certified results. Those are not in at this point, so stay tuned on that. And lastly, this Friday at the Confidence Lab, the Arts Council will be having an installation. So that's November 16th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, everyone is invited. And this project is quite unique. It's in collaboration with the Institute of Forest Genetics. And students at El Dorado Independence, excuse me, Independence High School were engaged to study and present an artistic project that examines the idea of resilience in our forest. And that's certainly a topic that is near and dear to all of our minds, so I look forward to seeing what the students came up with regarding that subject matter. So I'll look forward to seeing you at the Confidence Lab on this Friday. So with that, Vice Mayor Acuna.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, thank you for so elegantly representing us at the Veterans Memorial this weekend. We thank you for your duty on that. I understand it was a very well, well-received event this year and the 100th anniversary of the end of World War I. It was quite a, quite a day. I'd like to go back, I have some other things, but given the recent events in Paradise, they just kind of dwarfed by what has happened to that community. And I just would like to spend a couple of minutes, my minutes here to just restate what you have just helped launch and thank you for your work in looking at this issue and coming up with a solution that is a well-respected and recognized organization and encouraging all of us. I know I'm going to make my donation. I believe the, the goal as Bill Robey mentioned it was if 1,000 people give $100, they will raise $100,000.
Right.
Well, I intend to give my $100 to do my part.
Right.
And I want to thank the mayor for looking outside of the box and coming up with a solution that is acceptable to the community. I know trust when you give donations like this, this can be a big issue. And I can't think of any more trustworthy organization than the El Dorado Community Foundation and the work that they continue to do in this county. And so I want to just thank you on behalf of this. I know she mentioned Mayor Jones, I didn't realize Jody Jones, I've worked with her when she was District 3. She was Caltrans for us. Projects did not go forward without her approval. So she was a very instrumental and very professional person involved here with us in Placerville and El Dorado County. Sadly, I learned early on that all five council members lost homes in the fire. And there are dozens of first responders that have lost their homes. Most of the Paradise Fire Department, for example, has lost their homes. Number 5 patrolman, Buick County Sheriff and other law enforcement individuals. It's a very beautiful and popular spot, they are all without homes, just like all of the citizens that they serve while this event still unfolds. So I watch those reports, especially at night, when the Buick County Sheriff gives his very detailed and very somber report and cannot imagine the stress that those poor individuals are under. The call beyond duty is just tremendous. Sadly, we're living a piece of California history and when the time is right, as an elected, I intend to do my part to try and learn from this. Our citizens face the same risks, perhaps not as severe as a windstorm out of the Feather River Canyon, but we'd be foolish to think that we don't need to learn from what's happening right now in Paradise. And I hope to do my part to take that forward next year and make sure that we can do everything we can to protect everyone in our city. So again, please follow the mayor's suggestion and go find that link and please consider making a donation so that we can help our neighbors to the north. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Borelli?
Well, it's kind of the same thing, so I'm not going to go through it all, but I want to thank you for taking this, you know, and finding something that we can do because I think it's real important to come from our city.
Right.
And I think it's great, you know, to do that and share.
We're all in this together.
Yeah. So I really don't have too much else to report. I can't, I'm trying to, I was supposed to go to a CalCog meeting, but managed to get sick, so I didn't go. Anyway, but we really, I agree with Mark. I have been talking about, you know, developing a plan for, for Placerville and I also am really, this makes it even more, you know, you stop and think about if all five of us had lost our homes, you know?
Or our entire community.
Exactly. You know, it just really, yeah, so.
Generations upon generations have lost their homes. It's just, it's just mind-boggling. Councilmember Clarici?
Actually, just to, since we're on the subject, I agree, obviously a planning process and, you know, strategic planning around emergency evacuation is very important, emergency planning very important. It's ironic though that Paradise was actually very well-prepared.
I did see that.
Yeah, when I, I actually ran into Jody about six months ago at a city, one of these city things. And we talked about that and they had a scare about 10 years ago and so they went around and did a very comprehensive job of making sure that they had their plans in place, that people knew what their plans were, they actually did like drills and.
Drills.
If you moved into town, you got the plan. I mean, it was very comprehensive, but, and, and we should do that, there's no one suggesting that that should not happen. However, I think people should recognize the thing about this fire, from the time it started at 7:30 in the morning till the time around 4:00 in the afternoon, that's how long it took for the entire city to be engulfed. Now, it didn't burn down all at once, but that's how long it took. And most of that happened in about a five-hour stretch from about 11:00 to 4:00. The fire was burning at 80 acres a minute. Now, to give you an idea, Placerville is about six square miles, which means the entire city would ignite in 50 minutes. Think about that. And you need to evacuate out of that. I think, obviously it's a tragic loss of life, but it's absolutely remarkable and it's going to go up, I have no doubt unfortunately. It's actually remarkable that all that town got evacuated and there weren't more people got caught up in that thing. And we should thank God that it actually was somewhat limited because the fire moved so quickly through there that it was a catastrophic event. So, and it's funny because I'm working with a gentleman right now who used to live here and he still lives around, he lives in Roseville now. He owned a home up there and I was with him on Thursday afternoon and his phone was blowing up. I mean, it was like, he kept getting these texts and these messages and he's going, "Oh, my friend, you know, their house is gone, their house is gone." I mean, his house is, his parents' house, they, they're not alive anymore, but, you know, he rented it out and it's gone. This is a huge thing, but it was rather remarkable. We can get into PG&E at a later date. On a happier note, I took on a responsibility to hang some Christmas tree lights, or not tree lights, actually on buildings. One of our targets is Old City Hall, where the Arts Council is now, and they're making commitment to do some work, but we're going to try to do some other stuff. We'd also like to do the old DA's office and I'm trying to get together with them to just to get access to it. There's some old lights kind of along the ridge of the, of the building and I don't know if they work or not, if they've ever been on.
Yeah, they.
I've, I've been told that the courthouse, it shows how sometimes I don't notice things. I'm told the courthouse is lit up at Christmas.
It is.
And, and, and then the caboose, because believe it or not, this is something you, something you don't know, the city owns the caboose. So, who knew? So anyway, so those are three things. If you want to contact me if you'd like to help and/or just buy Christmas tree lights because we're going to have to buy lights, outside lights, and get it all done by week from Friday. And actually probably like Wednesday because obviously no one's going to go put lights up on Thursday. We need to go do that and Dennis and I have planned to do it and we're getting some help from the Arts Council. Andrew Von Der Schmied has, has said he would help. I'm sure Cleve would help because he just does. And anyway, so we would need some lights and some help and contact me or Dennis, I've just volunteered you, to, to work on this and we'd like to get it all done in a day or so. So anyway, and that'll be fun because then we'll have that and then the Christmas tree lighting the day after Thanksgiving, which is always really cool. So anyway, on a, on a happy note.
Thank you so much for doing that to ensure our town is festive during the holidays. We appreciate it. Councilmember Saragosa?
Well, count me in for helping to string up some lights and I'll also pick up some additional lights so we can do that.
Thank you.
So thank you for taking the lead on, on that. Same thing, just quickly on the fire, you know, it does lead me back to our incident a couple of weeks back with our lights out and just imagining if we had a true emergency with Highway 50 completely backed up, with our major arterial lanes all backed up, how would we move people out? How would we get fire engines, first responder units through the town? It's a scary thought, especially about how quickly a fire can move. And so it's not something we should forget about and we do need to, to talk more about this, we need to have our planning in place. I do, I still would like to have the PG&E rep at a, at a future meeting here, whether it's the next meeting or sometime, but I think it's important that we have that discussion as we move forward. The world be, I know this last fire, we don't know how it happened, there certainly was conjecture. There will be legislation in Sacramento talking about public utilities and what the ultimate forum those should be in. I think probably an increased call for municipalization of, of those public utilities, so I think that's to be continued. I'll continue to kind of monitor that, but I think we need to be in that discussion as a city. Certainly we're going to continue to have these issues going forward, so we have to stay vigilant on that. And again, I want to thank the mayor for taking the lead with that social media campaign. I know, I talked to a couple of friends at OES and same thing, you know, they appreciate everybody wanting to go and deliver clothes and shampoo and other goods, but it kind of creates a catastrophe within a catastrophe, just trying to maneuver all of that. And so, you know, to the extent that we can go through our own home here through El Dorado, to the foundation, if you, if you can't make the donation, but maybe you got a, an old Macy's gift card in a drawer you haven't used yet or something, you know, gift cards can also be used and those will be distributed to, to people throughout as well. There are many different ways to be able to do that. And again, I just want to thank the mayor for taking that on.
Thank you. All right, thank you all. All right, closed session report. Do we have anything to report?
We do not have anything to report as the council did not take reportable action tonight.
Thank you. Adoption of the agenda, do I have any changes?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, excellent. Ceremonial matters, matters. As I said, it was my privilege to present a proclamation to the Veterans Day Ceremony and we have it, you have it in your packet and it was a pleasure to, to represent the city. I won't read it tonight though. Item two, we have a proclamation congratulating the Nash, El Dorado chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution for 40 years of service to our community, which is amazing. Do we have a representative for the American Daughters of the Revolution in, all right.
You know what, I am going to their tea Sunday.
Are you?
Are you going to that?
Unfortunately I cannot, so can you take the proclamation?
I wonder if I should take that.
That would be great.
Okay.
I won't read the proclamation, but I want to just highlight some of the good work that they have done, which I found quite wonderful. They formed the chapter in 1978 here in El Dorado County and since then, every year they have provided events at local schools and libraries to support Constitution Week. They've annually participated in the Christmas trees along Highway 50. They offer essay contests for, you know, good citizen and American history projects. There is a beautiful marker on the historic Fossil House that's, that's just lovely. They've participated in National Night Out and planted trees in Apple Hill and given out food and clothing and other items to Placerville veterans as well as schoolchildren who cannot afford them. So they do a lot of good work in our community and want to congratulate them and thank them for their 40 years of service. So, that's just wonderful. It's things like this that make our community so incredibly special. All right, this, we are now on to public comment and this time is now yours. This portion of the meeting is reserved for any item that is not on our agenda. If you'd like to address the council, you could, well, when I open the public comment, you can come up to the podium and state your name for the record. You're doing great.
I'm on ice with Jared.
Well, you look great and we look forward to seeing it. We ask you to keep your comments to about three minutes and follow the golden rule. And with that, this time is now yours, so come on down, let's see that nice shirt and hear what you have to say.
I'm up.
Yeah, you, you're up. Good evening. Welcome to the Placerville City Council.
Thank you very much. I'd first off like to congratulate all of you on the recent elections. Well done. My name's Justin Freeland, I grew up in Paradise. My identification actually says Magalia, California on it still. I've been here for two years. I'm not a speaker, I wrote everything down. A lot of it you touched on, many of you touched on it and I don't see so well, but John, you touched on some of this and a couple of you other councilmen did. So anyways, I'm here concerned for this community. There's a very real danger that threatens us here. First of all, there are many factors that can cause a similar situation here. I understand that some cannot be helped. Lightning strikes, whatever, we talked about PG&E, we can't fix that here. However, some can and one of those things is PRC Public Resource Code 4291, the defensible space code. This must be strictly enforced starting today, tomorrow, whenever, now. This must be strictly enforced. There's 184,000 people living in El Dorado County, 11,000 in, in Placerville alone, I think it's almost 11,000. Those are, those are volunteer firefighters, our very first line of defense. We can't have one in 10 people on the block cleaning things up. The other nine aren't doing it, it's not going to help. PRC 4291 is our best and first line of defense. So please for your constituents, own well-being, vigorously enforce this law. The second major issue I want to address that, that a couple of you touched on was an evacuation and disaster preparedness plan. The evacuation of Paradise was the second this fire season and it was the third since 2008 that you mentioned. Earlier this summer, there was a fire. My brother, I have three brothers that lost a home. My mom, we just found out tonight, my mom's house is, my whole family's intact, so I'm blessed. Many of them weren't up there. But this was the second one this fire season, the second evacuation of the entire town. And even though the speed of this fire was unprecedented, nobody could have known how fast it could have moved. But in fact, I know a lady that took it upon herself to head eastbound or westbound on the eastbound, eastbound lanes toward safety. She, there's, there's a skyway with four lanes going up and down from Paradise and she took it upon herself to just go that way in the, in the wrong direction and it was either head-on collision or fire. And she went that way and many, many, many people followed after her. And, and, and thank God they did because many, many more would have, may have perished. And, and again, you guys touched on this, the, the accident a couple of weeks ago, just east of town on 50, I was waiting in traffic and, and I was going to work and, and, and the emergency services was having a tough time getting even through there. So we need an evacuation and preparedness, preparedness plan for, for us that I think it's a necessary guard ball. It's, it's, you know, there's fast-moving traffic going through, through there, but I think if there was just, you know, just even a couple of openings would have helped emergency services get to the accident. That, I think there was a fatality there or what, you know, but just a couple openings there even would, would allow us for, in case of a mass evacuation that we may need here, would have helped in that situation as well. In closing, yeah, I just want to thank all of you and, for listening to me and, and I think we need to just, really just enforce what we have already, 1494, I believe it's 1491, already existing, okay? And also I'm, I'm leading a grassroots effort. You might have seen my flyers around town, Placerville Hardware has, has the Campfire Aid. I got two numbers that if, if anybody wants to talk to me after this, I got like real-time news, real news if you will, on the situation over there and as far as, like, my whole family's there, so, so I can give you guys a direct link if need be, so. So thank you all and once again, congratulations on all your guys' elections.
Thank you for your comments and we are so very sorry for your family and for all their friends and neighbors in Paradise.
I appreciate it, thank you. This community is great.
It is.
It's, we're foothill brethren.
Yeah, we are, we are. Thank you so much. Would anyone else like to address the council? Good evening Sue.
Good evening Sue Rodman, Placerville. When we go to this website, do we put in our credit card number?
Yeah, it'll take you directly to the donation page, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, exactly.
Because I'm wondering if I can donate by credit card or.
Absolutely, credit card, yes. Credit card, yeah, thank you.
Okay, but I agree, we do need to do something for Placerville.
Yeah.
And we better get an evacuation plan that goes both directions because we don't know where it might come from. And we already know that Highway 50 can take a dump onto the freeway and close it and has done so in the past several times. And so anyway, yeah, and he's right, it doesn't help if you're the only one with defensible space.
Yeah.
I have defensible space, but my neighbor directly below me is a disaster. And so, and I tried to call the fire department and tell them, "You need to come and look at this because there's a big, big pine, an old gray pine that has fallen down, it's got branches and needles everywhere laying just above, it'd be a great place to start a fire." And she's not doing anything about it because she just rents and the landowner isn't doing anything about it. So how do we get these people who are just landowners who don't live here, who rented out, to get in and clean it up and make it fire safe for all of us?
Thank you Sue for your comments, certainly a concern of all of ours. Anyone else? All right, thank you all. Closed public comment at this point. And I know we'll be working aggressively on this issue as a city as this goes forward, it's top priority.
I'd just like to mention that we really have already started.
We have, that's true, that's true.
But it's, it's a slow process and, I mean, there's so many, you know, fingers that, so.
But this is expedited.
But I think we need to really, really hustle.
Absolutely, yeah, thank you all. Written communication, we received an email from Sue Rodman, so thank you so much. Any additional written communication? Yeah, all right, great. At this time, we're on the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one roll call or one vote if, unless any member of the council wishes to poll or comment on an item.
I would like to poll five.
Okay, which one? 8.5?
Poll or just comment on it?
Well, I want to, I have a couple of questions, so.
Okay.
We, we don't have to totally, you know, whatever your desire.
No, it's your desire.
I just want some questions answered.
Okay, we'll poll 8.5. Does any member of the public wish to comment on item 8.1 through 8.4? All right. Seeing that, do we have approval?
Motion for approval?
On items through 8.4?
With the exception of 8.5.
Second.
All right. Roll call please.
Vice Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye. All right, great. With that, we will hear item 8.5, which is adopt a resolution authorizing the examination of sales use and transaction tax records, which was a very comprehensive report. Love, love that.
It is, and it was very interesting and I'm not too sure that a lot of folks are aware of it and rather than just keep it on consent, I thought we should kind of maybe bring it forward. Cleve, do you want to give a real short explanation, but I'll tell you.
Or Dave?
Or Dave, okay. And I'll tell you what my question, what I, I'm kind of curious about. What I couldn't find is, I know that in entering into a larger contract and use, and the machinery and every, all the, everything that's going to be, how do we still, what if, what if a person was in business or somebody, they were doing business and sales? what if a, a person was in business, or somebody, they were doing business and sales, and it wasn't reported anyplace? So with all the, you know, the-
How could they be in business?
Under the table.
They wouldn't be.
Sales.
Oh, that happens all the time.
I know it does, but, so there's really not a mechanism to determine that.
That's not policing.
Because, and, and it, well, is it? I don't know.
You, you do have your business license system, so we monitor new businesses as they come into town to ensure that they apply for a business license, and that they continue to maintain a business license. So, and we also collect information on the business, whether they're providing a service or selling merchandise, or both. And if they're selling merchandise, you know, that's something, we can flag that and, and monitor whether or not they're reporting their sales tax. And if they're not, we can approach them directly, or we can ask HDL to look into it and find out why that is, and, and if there's reimbursements to the state, which ultimately comes back to us to pursue that.
So this new program, it, it's just, the way I'm reading this, it's just a really easy situation for them to type it in, or you to type it in?
Yeah, the value added of this contract is access to their information system, so they have a direct link with the state. In real time, they upload the information into their software. It's cloud-based, meaning we can access it through the internet, and it gives us access to very granular information to each month, quarterly. We can do queries, we can do analytics with it to where, currently we're using Excel, which is a very powerful tool, but it's very cumbersome and granular. And this gives us more horsepower to be able to generate reports to the council, graphs, charts, those kind of things, so that you can see really where the trends are going. And this also gives you access to all your add-on sales taxes, your Measure J, H, L. Right now, just because the sta-, we don't have the staff to really generate that information manually with Excel, this will give us the tools we need to give you, the public, your Measure H, L committee, that detail, not by business, we, it's confidential, but just trends by business type. So it's going to take you to the whole new level. You know, currently, your sales tax generates $8 million a year, and it represents approximately 54% of your general fund. It's very significant, so it's important that we have better information, more timely information about your sales tax, and that's what this does.
Well, I remember one time, it was at a meeting, and Sherry Rafferty was there, and she was talking about how I believe that she personally, in her department, that they investigated a lot of, and they found a lot of, it maybe wasn't outright fraud, but it was, you know, so they were able to recover. And I thought it was interesting, and maybe to tell the folks that just what we've had up until now, since, is it 2008 that you've, you found a million dollars?
Since 1991.
Oh, 91?
Yeah.
Oh, well, I'm, okay.
Still, it's a million dollars.
It was a million dollars, but, I mean, yeah. But it was interesting that, I, I, for a long time, I did not know that this existed, that we were, you know, looking into that, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further questions or comments from the council?
Just one, and it's the 15% that, that they, I guess, get to keep on recoverable sales tax, is that sort of standard, or is that like a, we got a lesser amount that, for the charge, for the 15% over eight quarters?
It varies, you know, there, there's only a few firms that do this type of work. When you look at potentially the future income we would get from it, it's actually a small amount when you look long-term.
Right.
It, it, based on the effort that they make, it seems very reasonable.
Industry standard type?
Yeah, it's very reasonable.
Okay, thank you.
And do they do the policing? Do they, are they the ones that, or does the city have them, when you discover something?
Primarily through analytics, they're able to identify if businesses are underreporting or not reporting at all. They look at the type of business, the type of products that they're selling, and whether or not the reportable sales taxes are reasonable. Of course, if it's a franchise or a brand name where you see in other cities, they would expect a certain level of sales. And if it's not, if it doesn't meet the smell test, they're going to look into it.
Okay.
And they're very successful.
That's what I was wondering, so, okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Clarici?
Dave, in your experience, is this mostly businesses that deal mostly in cash? Because it seems to me if you're using a Visa card or some other kind of a card, that would be a much more difficult transaction to hide.
You know, it, it, it is, so I don't want to give anybody's good ideas of how to avoid paying taxes, but.
Yeah, don't say that.
It's, it's a coordinated effort. Let's face it, there are, you know, people can try to avoid reporting, but there are multiple ways of looking at a business.
Right.
Through the business license, through income, tax returns at the state level, there's a, so, we don't get into that detail as far as, but other agencies in the state do, and so we share information.
So, but do they, are those the things that they give you access to, so that?
With, with HDL, what they do is they say, we, they send us a report, and they say basically, we suspect this business is either not reporting at all or underreporting, and we would like to look into it. And so they do an audit, they work with the state, and they get access to their books, and they compare what they're reporting versus what their sales are, whether it's reasonable, or they, you know, does it reconcile? And if it doesn't, then they make a claim against the business. It's very professional, there's nothing scary about it, but it's, you know, and it's really just, they're upholding, working with the state Department of Fines and, or excuse me, Fees and Charges, to make sure that they're collecting the correct amount. So, but again, they're already doing all that now. What we're asking you tonight to do is add the information services to kind of take us to the next level.
So we can make informed decisions, which will be very helpful. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? If not, I'll bring it back to the council for action. Do I have a motion?
Quick question for Dave.
Oh, absolutely.
Dave, is this going to help you when you prepare your top 20 business list?
Absolutely.
And we talked about this last year, didn't we, when getting you this additional firepower?
This was an ASL, it's actually, you're late, but it is something that you thoroughly looked at and built into your budget.
So it'll be sort of like what you gave as a?
Correct, yeah. What I'd like to do, I haven't talked to Cleve about this in detail, but what, what I'd like to do is bring a report like that to the council quarterly, so you would have that, and also put it on our website.
I'd like that, too, it'd be great.
It's very powerful information, and there's more custom reporting we can do for you if you would like, you know, if there was a-
Sure.
-particular type of report, looking at businesses in different ways. Again, we can't go down to the specific business, but the type of businesses that we have.
Great, all right. Thank you so much.
With that, I'll move approval of the item.
Second?
All right. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye, thank you. All right, no ordinances, and with this, we are on public hearings, which is to approve a map amendment, and we're looking at the Quartz Mountain subdivision. So, Mr. Rivas, good evening.
Good evening, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The applicant is requesting approval to expand the boundaries of the designated building envelope that was established with the recreation of the Quartz Mountain subdivision Phase One map. The building envelope refers to that area within each of the lots that may be used for construction of a single-family home and other accessory structures. The building envelope expansion areas are located near the northeast corner and the north and the southeast corner of the site, as shown in your Exhibit A of the staff report. The applicant is desiring to expand the building envelope to do the following: one, to allow for the construction of a single-family residence on that portion of the lot that is the most level, which would minimize site grading; two, to bring the building envelope closer to Creek or Court, and conform to the recorded building envelopes on the same side of the street within the subdivision; and then, thirdly, result, and it would result in the removal of five ponderosa pines that were protected by removing, by modifying the building envelope. Then it would be located outside of the existing envelope by placing them within the proposed building envelope expansion, where they could be removed to establish defensible face, space for fire safety. And we, we provided the council a copy of that section that was mentioned earlier, and that's PRC 4291. The planning commission considered this at their meeting on October the 16th, and the planning commission is recommending approval. And with that, staff doesn't have any other comments to make. We are recommending that the council approve map amendment 1801 that would modify the building envelope for Lot 9 of the Quartz Mountain subdivision Phase One map, and certify that the project is categorically exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to Section 15305, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval that are contained in Exhibit D of your staff report. And that concludes staff's report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I do want to indicate that Mr. Chris Baxter, the owner of the property, is available tonight to speak to his request. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Rivas, appreciate it. Does any member of the council have any questions on this item? Oh, down to my left here, nothing, all right. To my right, any questions at this point?
No, at this time.
All right, at this point, we'll open public comment, and I'd like to invite the applicant. Do you have anything you'd like to say, Chris, on this item? If you want, if you, if you do, feel free to come on down. Welcome.
I realize I overdressed, I was in a hurry. Not the first time I've been accused of that.
You look just fine. Come on down, speak in the microphone, please. State your name for the record.
Chris Baxter, resident in Placerville for the last 27 years. First off, I'd like to commend John for the caboose lighting, the caboose thing, so you can highlight the beautiful paint job, right, Steve? It's nice addition there. I would like to see more of the area cleared out, because if you look down this canyon, the property next to mine is just a tinderbox, and that one is a little bit scary. Mine, I think, is going to be cool now. But the, mine will be the fourth house in the, in the neighborhood. There's another one being built across the street, and it's a nice spot. I kind of envisioned, I saw a thing on TV today, it was a cul-de-sac, and the fire was all around, but this cul-de-sac was protected, excuse me. And these houses were there, the landscaping was still intact, the bushes, the trees, because they protected it. That's what I want mine. I'm on a cul-de-sac, I'd like to see that, but, but I, I would really like to move the house up to the street where the CCNR has really called for it, because to put it down back where the building envelope is right now is just, it's just in harm's way. Any fire coming up the canyon, we couldn't get out. And it's just a safer spot up there, it's safer for anybody that has to respond to a fire. It just makes sense. I would, I would definitely like to clear out some more of the area, but it's not my I took down some trees, I thought it was allowed to do that, and I think it's the best thing that ever happened, was to take those suckers down, take down more if I could. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Any other member of the public wish to comment on this item? All right, seeing done, I'll bring it back to the council for further discussion and Vice Mayor Acuna?
Couple of questions for, or one question for Mr. Rivas. Here, are the expenses incurred by, by the city to amend this map been covered by the applicant?
Yes, there is a application fee for, for submitting a map amendment application.
And how did the city become aware the trees were removed?
When, when staff did a site visit, staff was able to see that the trees were removed, and I think the applicant stated that the trees were removed. I think it was an inadvertent misunderstanding.
Okay, so that was, it wasn't like for a pre-inspector for grading or issuance of a building permit that you went out there, it was just the applicant himself realized that maybe he'd gone in the wrong direction?
Yes, I think the applicant probably jumped the gun a little bit. It's my understanding and talking with staff that staff had indicated that once the building envelope, if it's modified by council, then he would be free to remove those five ponderosa pines. And so I think he just went ahead and removed them in anticipation of that approval.
Okay. Thank you. I'll wait, I'll let my other council members to make comments.
Councilmember Borelli?
Well, I was just, so when that happens, is there a, a fine involved, or it, it just depends on the circumstances, or what, how do you handle that?
Well, there's no fine involved, but as part of the subdivision, the environmental review that was performed when the map was originally approved by the city required the establishment of these building envelopes to preserve the trees, the tree canopies on, on the site.
So that's the purpose?
That was the purpose behind it.
Okay, I didn't quite understa-, okay. I see, okay.
So, so what staff is doing, if, if you look at proposed condition of approval number four, we would be requiring that the, that the property owner replant some additional trees to replace those. And we're also allowing the flexibility that if, you know, if, if the property owner is not in favor of ponderosa pines, then the applicant can choose another species of trees that are common to that area.
Any further questions? Councilmember Saragosa, go down here at the end.
No, I was just going to say, there was mitigation that had been built into it, so those, we'll get five new trees.
Yes.
Councilmember Clarici?
I actually, I've known Chris a while, and I actually went up there and looked at it, and one thing that struck me, and it was interesting, because they were trying to save the pines, it's really not a great site for pines, it's mostly rocks up in that part of the world, and some other kind of a tree, I can't imagine what it would be if it's not manzanita to plant, well, no, but I mean, it's, you know, it's a pretty rough part of the world. There are some trees you could plant up that, that would actually be better, and the pines up there just don't, I mean, they do okay, but they don't do great, and, you know, so I'm, I think this is all just fine.
Do I have a motion, or any further discussion?
Let me have one other question to staff, and I appreciate the information here. One of the things is the applicant notes is that the, the area is, is heavily brushed and has a lot of fuel in it. And it would seem like, and it is also pointed out in the application, that the old standards that were applied to Quartz Mountain don't really apply today. So it would seem like this would be an opportunity to give the applicant the permission, or maybe perhaps even require, and, and you know, they were nice enough to provide a current copy of the Caltrans, or Caltrans, CalFire, how could I insult that organization? The CalFire, current CalFire regs, and it would seem like this would be a great time to do a fuel modification on the rest of that lot based on today's standards. Now, I didn't really wander down and see just how thick the brush is on the rest of it, but as has been pointed out repeatedly, the fire threat is going to come from down the hill. It isn't even really going to come from these ponderosas, it's going to come from the neighboring lots, and it's going to become the downhill toe of this lot. So I thought perhaps this would be the time to look at having a fuel modification done on this parcel to bring it into compliance with the 2018 CalFire standards. Mr. Rivas, would you have any thoughts on that?
I think the council could certainly add a condition, a condition number five to meet PRC 4291, and that would be required where staff would go out prior to granting certificate of occupancy of a newly constructed single-family home, that they meet that. It's our understanding, talking with the applicant, Mr. Chris Baxter, that he has every intention of providing for defensible space, removing excess understore vegetation to prevent ladder fires and that sort of thing, and limbing up any of the trees that still exist on the site.
I would, I would want to add that condition to this particular request, that we have the applicant perform a, a fuel mitigation as outlined by today's regulations, as stated by Mr. Rivas.
So is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
I just want to point out, if I may, if you look at Exhibit A, and that's map amendment 1801 exhibit that shows the site, if you look at the setbacks and you look at the property lines, and then you compare that with the literature that was provided by CalFire, you can see that the applicant will have some difficulty in meeting even that 30-foot defensible space that was the prior defensible space required by CalFire. It's now been expanded to 100 feet, so we can only hope that he will work with his neighbors and provide for a more adequate defensible space, but that would, I just want to point out that that would be beyond his control. But that would, I just want to point out that that would be beyond his control.
You know, that's one thing I, and I'm sorry I didn't ask it at the time, but I was going to ask about neighbors. You know, whether they're, whether they've had to do the same thing that we're requiring from Mr. Baxter.
I think now that, you know, staff and the city were aware of the fighter, fire danger, any new subdivisions typically we would require the subdivider to provide a wildland fire safety plan that would provide for the fuel modification for the entire subdivision. And then that would be then either required to be maintained through CCNRs and the like. But this is a much older subdivision.
Well, you know, we're talking about all this fire prevention and stuff, and, you know, this might be a way to get started. You know, we--
One lot at a time.
Exactly.
One other question for staff. When I went out and took a look at these trees, I noticed that every other lot out there is posted for a notice of trustee sale, I assume. Well, not every lot, but most of them had little paper signs on them. So assuming a bank is trying to unload this?
I'm going to refer that question to Mr. Driscoll, our city attorney. I know he's been handling some of that.
Thank you. And let me just say, the reason I ask that is just because of the fact that this is an older subdivision, that now is, it had an older standard, and it has also now grown in quite a bit. And so there's, what, over 20-some, 30 years of brush growing on these lots? And so this is a big issue. Mr. Driscoll?
The sale that was posted was a county tax sale.
That's what I thought.
And the ad valorem taxes had not been paid for a period of time. Actually, 2010, '11, and '12, I think, were the years. The property owner has since redeemed those, so they actually did not get sold. And the property owner, we've been working with with respect to bonds that are on the property in an attempt to get something going on there, get some houses built and that sort of thing.
So by doing that, would what Mark suggested, which I think is great, require them to?
Yeah, when they come in for--
Before you approve?
Building permits and--
I mean, not one lot at a time. I think the whole thing should be--
Well, those lots have been created already. And so they're existing valid lots. Now, there's some undeveloped property within that subdivision, about 22 acres. And if they come in for a map on that, which I believe they intend to do, I think at that time, we would have the ability to require more of a fuel reduction on those larger parcels. But on those individual lots, I think we have to deal with them one at a time.
Just wait till they sell?
Yeah. Or when they come in for a building permit.
Well, depending on the condition, there may be code enforcement action. We can look at all--
Yeah, that was, I was just going to say, I'm sure Mr. Baxter would be happy to see those vacant lots brushed to some more modern standard.
There could certainly be code enforcement--
Yeah, I think we need to look into that.
I do, too.
Would you like to restate your--
I wouldn't want to tie Mr. Baxter's project up with that part. Oh, restate my--
Yeah, so we have a clear understanding of what your motion is?
Well, it would be to a thorough staff's recommendation with the addition of an item number, I believe Pierre said it would be number five. And that would be for the applicant to complete a wildland fire mitigation project before issuance of a occupancy, a certificate of occupancy could be issued. And work with city staff to complete that.
I'll second.
All right. And, let's see. So all those in favor of this item?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right. Well, thank you so much, Mr. Baxter. We wish you luck in your new home. Look forward to seeing you at the neighborhood. All right. With that, we are on item discussion, action items. Number 12.1, adoption of a resolution approving the number of cannabis-related businesses allowed in the city of Placerville, according to ordinance 1694. Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Mayor and council. As you recall, as we move forward with regulation of cannabis within the city, one of the items still outstanding is within the ordinance that requires the council to adopt a resolution establishing the number and type of commercial cannabis businesses that shall be permitted to operate in the city. So that is the purpose of this item tonight. Our council committee, consisting of Vice Mayor Cunha and Councilmember Clarici, met and looked at this item and came up with a recommendation which would include three retail businesses and three, what we're termed cannabis testing facilities. And in addition to that, a microbusiness would be considered a retail business for the purposes of this resolution. So it would be a total of six, but only three retail and then additional three testing facilities. The resolution has been prepared to address that. The next step that we would have, obviously, as you know, the Planning Commission is preparing to hear the issue regarding the business overlay zone. So these businesses would have to fall within that business overlay zone wherever they're established, once that is also completed. I don't think I have anything else to add on this item. It's pretty straightforward, I think. I would mention that I did receive an email today from Rod Miller, who has been at some of our meetings. He's the president, I believe, of the Growers Association. His comment was that he would ask us to consider allowing non-volatile manufacturing as another business that could be required. However, our current ordinance does not allow that, only in conjunction with a microbusiness. So that could be allowed within, in conjunction with a microbusiness--
Say it again?
Non-volatile manufacturing.
So no further action would need to be taken to allow that in conjunction with a microbusiness?
That's correct.
Okay.
But it would not be allowed outside of a microbusiness.
Got it. All right. Does the council have any further questions or discussion on this, comments at this point? All right. Open up for the public. Any member of the public wish to speak on this item? Come on down, and please state your name for the record. Good evening, Kelly.
Kelly Chisano, representing Pure Life and Diamond Springs. Thank you again, board. And obviously, all of our hearts go out to everyone in paradise, and I'm glad to hear that everybody, so much, you know, heart went into that, this meeting. As far as the numbers, I think that the three retail is a good, is a good number. I think not going, obviously, one doesn't make any sense. Two is still kind of close to, you know, really doesn't give too much of a market. Three does. I know that you guys, in your ordinance, were talking about using HDL and the merit system that they had kind of looked at. I would recommend going with that. I don't, I didn't hear any discussion against going with that, but just staying away from lottery-type systems because those type of things don't seem to work out. And then the three testing facilities, I think, is great. I think it's excessive as far as a testing facility. I think Sacramento, the city of Sacramento, has three, maybe? Maybe? I think more like two testing facilities. There might be three or four. But it's, it won't be, there won't be a problem. I think Rod's recommendation of allowing some non-volatile or and manufacturing or distribution licenses is another license that would really use just space, and you wouldn't know anything from the outside. Inside, it would be, and it helps those other, not so much the non-volatile, but the distribution, helps the supply chain in things staying in our county. The county's measures all passed as well, so there's other spaces in the county that obviously make more sense for cultivation. Cultivation doesn't make really any sense in the small of city. But, you know, I agree with the staff's recommendation with those other considerations of maybe considering some of those other types of licenses. Nursery is another one that could be done indoors, is very vital to the full circle and is very low-impact as far as the community. It's growing small plants, most of them less than, you know, mom plants that are this tall, and the rest of them, less than two inches usually. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your involvement throughout this process.
Kelly, could I ask a question?
Okay.
So you're, tell me, we're asking for three of the testing, and you're saying it's not necessary? So each, like, if you had a shop, I mean, we're talking about retail business. So the testing facility would not be required in each one of the, for each one?
No.
So--
The testing facility is its own entity. It's essentially, it is the island in the cannabis industry. All products are made everywhere else. The distributor, who would be somebody that I was recommending be in the city, it's the distributor's responsibility to get said products from manufacturers and companies. They would warehouse them. They would be responsible for sending them to the testing facility. And then they get them back, or they get the results back from the testing facility, then to bring to a retail. So we get it from a distributor that sent it to a testing facility. Not to say that if there was three here and a few distributors, and depending what the county does, it might really make sense for there to be three testing facilities because there's so much cultivation going on just outside of the city. But like, right now, I think the city of Sacramento has three, and it's dealing with the hub of a state. And not to say that they're not backed up, though, also. So their wait times are long currently.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Good evening.
Good evening. Dale Schaefer, I'm a cannabis attorney. I liked your numbers for retail. If you go by the numbers around the state, 15,000 typically supports a retail store, if you believe any numbers in this community at all. But because Highway 50 comes through, you're going to get a lot of extra traffic. Three is a better number than one, which brings problems. As Kelly said, lotteries have not worked. Merit-based is a better way to bring people to this. The supply chain, though, is little understood by people. Retailers get this from a distributor packaged, past testing. So it's going to come into the retail shop from a distributor who does all of the quality assurance, gets the testing, and stores it. But a distributor has three parts to it: transportation, storage, and full distributor, which does quality assurance. The passage of these latest measures in the county, I believe it would be wise to back up and coordinate with them to see who's going to do the big distribution. They're very expensive. You can then move it into a storage, which then could take it into retail stores here. Testing, the equipment's half a million dollars apiece, and it takes three, four pieces. It's not realistic to have the testing lab here. It's just not. No one's going to bring that kind of money. I've got clients coming in from out of state. They're going to bring $5 to $10 million for equipment, and we may get them in El Dorado Hills. That's plenty close enough. So coordination with what's going on out there, really, is what you need to do. Metric is going to keep track of everything. I'd strongly suggest you have your computers that you get talk with metric so you keep track of every transfer in the supply chain you can capture. Transfers, how much? And they're going to have to declare what the prices are, so you can keep track of people. I like the term scofflaws because this legacy group is full of scofflaws who don't like to follow rules. So if you set these very tightly, you can keep track of this as it rolls out. The problem we face right now in the bigger industry is that it's taken a faceplant because of taxes, fees, and regulations. It's not business-friendly right now. The black market, if you can use that term, is winning hands-down and laughing all the way to where they bury their money. So if you want this to work, you really have to jump up to 30,000 feet and evaluate what your needs are here, what you're trying to deliver, and what's wise amongst these different licensed entities to be here. Manufacturing non-volatile, you can put in their permit. They cannot extract. You can allow them to package, to make edibles. And you can allow shared facilities where moms and pops can come in and get a small space and make their own little selective products. And that can be marketed locally, and it can be also sent out of town packaged. So I would just caution you to be careful. I think that who's going to come in and get these licenses should be carefully evaluated. Experience in the industry is critical. But people who don't like to follow rules, you should keep a very, very close tab on them. So thank, I look forward to working with you, and three's a good working number for retails. Thank you.
Mr. Schaefer? So how do you, you said we should evaluate the need. How do you, how do you go about evaluating the need? And we've never had it here, and you don't send out questionnaires, obviously. I'm not trying to be funny. I just, I just--
Well, there are groups out there monitoring the numbers that support a business in the current industry. The current industry is miniscule compared to the unregulated market. So you have to anticipate a little bit down the road as you rein them in through enforcement, code enforcement, perhaps criminal sanctions, and open the market up. I think that the numbers that support a retail shop are going to go up. Right now, it's hard to monitor the unregulated market. 15,000 population for one retail shop is bandied about. But that's for an urban population that's not having flow by on Highway 50. South Lake Tahoe was dealing with a sense of alacrity because there's a retail shop on the other side of North Shore. I think they're going to stop and reevaluate again because you can't put a saddle on a cow trying to put a business somewhere where it really doesn't logically belong. And asking more questions and taking a little more time is probably a better way to do this than jumping in and see business failures. And I'd be happy to work with you in a way I can. I have businesses all over the state I represent, and we do have some idea of numbers. As much as you can believe anything in this industry right now, there are a few numbers out there.
Great. Thank you very much for your informed discussion. Appreciate it a lot. Any other comments on this item? All right, with that, I will close this item and bring it back to the council for further discussion. Mr. Morris?
Mayor and council, I just want to mention a couple of things. Same thing with the distribution, with the manufacturing. The ordinance that you've already adopted does not allow distribution only in conjunction with a microbusiness. So in order to outright allow a distribution facility short of being part of a microbusiness, it would require you to go back and amend your current business regulation ordinance. So--
I'll tell you, after listening to this, I'm a little hesitant to, I'm thinking, like, okay, so it seems like both of the fellows have stressed that we don't need three testing.
If I can just add there, I think what they're saying is we won't get three testing facilities. I don't think it hurts to allow them, but we just won't get them. So it won't be a detriment. Am I correct in saying that, Kelly? So I don't think that will hurt. And I think they're in agreement with the three retail. So I think we're okay moving forward like this. It's just a matter of whether we want to go back and look at anything differently. But, so--
Vice Mayor, okay, please, go ahead. Councilmember Saragosa?
I've thought about this a lot. And I, you know, we're basically going from zero to six, but probably zero to three because we're not going to get the testing facilities. There are a lot of unanswered questions still. We don't know exactly what's going to happen in the county lands. This is all new business for everybody. And I'm having some reluctance, and I was a supporter of this on the original, on the original side. But I'm just not, I don't know if I'm comfortable with three right off the bat. I would almost rather see us look at maybe two and then revisit it in a year to see what those look like. You know, three, I mean, because we are the transportation quarter, we could potentially get them. You know, the rest of El Dorado County is rural. They may not have the storefronts that we do. We don't know what the business overlay is going to look like. For myself, I don't particularly want three shops on Main Street. Not that that would, what we could approve. And I know we have a discretion to--
Well, that's what I was going to say. We don't need, I mean, if we approve three, we could have one. You know, it's at our discretion.
I just think, though, that once you have a process that's open and everyone meets the requirements, it then becomes difficult for us to say no to somebody if they're all great applicants and there's nothing in their background that would be entoward great applicants and there's nothing in their background that would be entwined, or would say these aren't gonna be good, you know, citizens for us to have running an operation. So I'm a little concerned about doing three. I would be comfortable with two for now. I'd be comfortable with one, but I don't think that's likely to garner much support there. But I'm just not comfortable with three at this point, especially with the uncertainty of what's still gonna happen throughout the county. Those are my comments for now.
And I'd like to piggyback on that. I, for one, would also support two retail establishments. To let us kind of ramp up to this, and I like the idea of revisiting it in a year to see what the impacts are, because we really have no idea. This is, this is a very fluid process, and it's a moving target. And rather than, you know, I have a feeling that the city of Placerville is going to be a sought-after location for this, and yet, before we jump in full tilt, the idea of testing the water, so to speak, and figuring out what the impact is to our law enforcement, to our citizens, to our business districts, I think that makes sense. So I would support that. Any further discussions? Yes?
John?
Yeah. I was on the subcommittee, and just to give you a little background, when we discussed three as opposed to some other numbers, it wasn't so much like what the carrying capacity was or anything else. It was mostly like, well, if you have a permitting process, and this would be a rather robust permitting process. If you had one, essentially, you would be giving somebody a golden ticket. You'd be handing them the one location in town, irrespective of what we don't know in the county and all this other stuff that's sitting out there. My guess is that would be a very profitable, very valuable thing to have in your hand. You'd be the one person. And then we discussed two and kind of went through the numbers, and we thought three was a good number because it would allow for some competition and a broad enough sort of platform that you wouldn't be really guaranteeing somebody some kind of level of success. So, you know, the government is really bad when it meddles in the areas of capitalism too much. And that was kind of what we were trying to avoid by having three. We thought we would have a broad enough number of them out there that we wouldn't be kind of meddling with the ideas of capitalism. I know that this is sort of a brave new world, but the vote, I don't know, I was asking Michael what the vote was on the tax, but it was fairly, it was a fairly good spread. I mean, it was like, was, I don't know, was it 60-40, was it 58-40? I mean, it was a fairly, like this. So I think the folks in town, you know, Prop 64, and now this vote, have told folks like us that they're kind of comfortable with this idea. You know, our discomfort is one thing, but the folks out there, I think, might be a little bit ahead of the curve on this idea. And I think three's a good number, and Mark can weigh in on that as well, but I think three's a good number because it provides that. And you know what'll happen? I mean, like, once again, and I know it's different, I know it's different, but maybe it isn't different. If three people wanted to propose a furniture store, if three different furniture sellers came to us and said, "We want to put three furniture stores in town," we wouldn't be having a conversation of, "Well, do you really think that's the right number? Is there too much competition?" You know, are we, no, we'd say, "Fine, go open three furniture stores, and two of you will go out of business, and one of you will be in business, and the one that runs the best furniture store will be in business." The idea is, this is a product that can be sold. And I kind of favored three, because I thought it was a number that the, we thought it was a number that the community would find acceptable, and that would allow for some decent sort of market behavior in the industry. And so that's kind of why we were thinking what we were thinking. If all heck breaks loose, I'm gonna try, Pat, not to curse tonight, if all heck breaks loose, we can always pull these things back. You know, if there, for some reason, something really extraordinary happens in town on the negative side, we can always pull these things back. Anyway, that was the genesis of three. We're not gonna put them on Main Street, because we've already said we're not gonna put them in certain parts of the town. They'll be on Placerville Drive and parts of Broadway and parts of Upper Main. I think the map is gonna be in front of the Planning Commission here soon enough. So anyway, that was the rationale. The three testing labs was pure ignorance on our part. I mean, it was literally like, there was this thing, it's a testing lab. I went and visited one, as you know, and then I found out how much all the equipment costs, and I went, "Oh, okay, well, there's not gonna be..." There may be one. I think there could be one. You know, I mean, someone may decide they like Placerville, but there's this weird 300-mile radius, and overnight, and there's, believe me, it's weird. Anyway, so it doesn't bode well, but it could happen. It could happen. But three, one, two, you know, it'll be what it is. The interesting thing about distribution and some of these other things that were mentioned that's potentially something we could list to, but we have to change our ordinance. Here is where I think maybe a little kind of nod to the social side of this and some of the concern side of this is, let's get some retail businesses out there. They'll figure out a way to make money, or they won't. And then maybe we can come back and live with the evolutionary processes that are out there in the county, because we really don't know what the county's gonna do, even though they approved all these measures. And I think that that is a model that the retailers, the potential retailers, might be willing to live with, and then see how it goes. We can always amend, well, I may not be amending anything after a couple of weeks, but some group of people will be amending something potentially. And you can kind of just sort of, you know, we do this by iterations, but that's why we came up with three. A long way to get around to it, that's why we came up with three. And it also is kind of a line from Monty Python, so, because the number shall be three. Anyway, I know, I dug deep. That was a big lead-up. That was a big lead-up to get to the Holy Grail, but I'm telling you...
Oh, brother. They keep coming.
Yeah, I know, I know. You're gonna miss this.
That's why we love you, John. That's why we love you.
I know, it's probably my highest and best use right there, but, but anyway, that's why we came up with that number. Mark, if you want to add?
And if I could add to, and I love the furniture store analogy, that's a great one. And you would come up with it, because the number shall be three. We did go through the little bit of business that we have in the fair market, and it's, I agree with John, it's absolutely not our place to get out there and control things. We want to make government as invisible as possible. We also don't want to create a monopoly that can be abused. I think we have seen through yet another vote of not only, of the county citizens, I was really surprised, I was surprised at the level of support that all the county measures seem to enjoy. So it basically opened up Eldorado County. The fact that the Measure M, which what city wouldn't have loved to have Measure M for their cannabis ordinance, as did a letter, we got to get it. And with zero campaigning, it was almost 70% in favor of. I think the citizens are expecting us to move this thing forward, get it operating, and bring this industry out of the shadows and the parking lots and what have you. The, I would also ask that my fellow council members consider that with the number three, the work that we have done so far, and with the help of Mr. Rivas, and hopefully soon with the Planning Commission, when you look at the areas that are being recommended, it does control a lot of the social, some of these social concerns, which I totally respect. They don't want things on Main Street, they don't want this, we don't want that. And they could address, it will address that. And you will also look at the ordinance that we work so hard on, and all of the criteria that these, and I hope three, applicants are gonna have to go through, is onerous. They will look back upon these ordinances in 20 years and probably go, "Oh, boy, how did they ever get away with all of these conditions?" Well, and that was one of the reasons I wanted us to move this thing forward, so that we would be in the era where we would call the shots. And I think we have done that. So if we do get three applicants that can pass the system of checks and balances that we have already adopted, with a consultant that we have already engaged, those are gonna be three pretty serious business ventures. And they're gonna sell a lot of furniture.
Yeah.
They are gonna want to succeed, because they are gonna have a lot invested in obtaining and opening a permit in this town. So I would encourage us to stay with three. The council can address it again in a year if it becomes, or at any time if it becomes a problem. Again, that's something that we have included in the ordinance.
I think you guys did a really great job on that ordinance. I really think you've sewed up, I just don't think there's wiggle room, so. And I also don't see anything wrong with three versus two.
City Attorney Driscoll, did you have anything further to add to this discussion?
Not really.
Okay. I saw you kibitzing over there.
No, no, I was just looking at some other jurisdictions. The city manager's correct in what he indicated, the restrictions that are there because of the way our ordinance is written. You can always change that if you find that you need to do that at a later date. I don't think you have to delay this, you know, if you find in the future you want to change this.
All right, thank you very much.
So from everything we've heard tonight, do you still think we should keep that three in for the testing facility, since everybody's saying it'll never happen?
It's not gonna hurt anything.
Okay, all right.
Well, do I have a motion? Does anyone like to make a motion?
I would like to move this.
Go ahead.
I'm going to move it. It's moved. I moved staff recommendation.
And I will second the motion.
All right, may we have a roll call vote, please, on this item?
Vice Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Clorici?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
No.
Mayor Thomas?
No. All right. Thank you all, and we do appreciate all your work, Vice Mayor Acuna and Councilmember Clorici. I know you've worked incredibly hard with our staff on this.
Just to encourage everybody to stay involved with our cannabis journey. The Planning Commission, the Planning Commission, and there was a real difficulty, because we've had, we have a vacancy and what have you, they are gonna hear the overlay map on December the 4th. So anybody that is concerned, and I know I have been contacted by property owners, December the 4th, the Planning Commission at 6:00 P.M.
And that's deciding where cannabis businesses will be allowed inside the city of Placerville limits, so that's an important discussion if you're interested in this item.
You know, Councilmember Acuna, I haven't been on a cannabis mission for many decades now, but when you put it, when you put it that way, it sounds pretty darned okay, so...
Well, with that, let's talk about a Sierra tank bypass project, huh?
Okay, let's do that.
That's actually really important.
It is, this is, yeah, really important. So item 12.2, and who is, and City Engineer Rebecca, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas, Vice Mayor Acuna, and council members.
This is an exciting item.
Yes, we are very excited to bring this item forward. It's been a long time coming, and so we're very grateful that this night has finally come. The purpose of this item before you this evening is to award a construction contract with C.E. Cox General Engineering and the related budget actions and appropriations. Bids were opened back in May of this year, with one bid being received that it did exceed the design engineer's estimate and project funding. However, the bid itself was actually found to be in conformance with the contract requirements, and the contractor in good standing. Additionally, C.E. Cox General Engineering just recently completed the construction on the city's Chanel School Pressure Reducing Station project, on time and on budget. On October 29th, 2018, Measure HL Committee heard the recommendations from staff in order to move this item forward through to approval of the construction contract. All those recommendations are outlined in staff's report, and the summarized project budget is also provided in staff's report, related to the construction, construction engineering, construction management inspections, and contingencies. As a side note, to help with the funding constraints that were outlined in the report, engineering staff will be administering the contract management and inspection services. Staff's recommendations are outlined in tonight's report, and we're very excited to move forward with this Measure HL project. And that concludes staff's report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, all right. This is a very needed project that has been a long time coming, so we're excited to see this move forward. I do have a couple of questions for you, Rebecca. In the discussion on page two, we talk about the fact that we looked at building in an additional 28,000 to cover private residential pressure regulators if necessary. Can you kind of describe when a pressure regulator, you know, would be necessary? Can you kind of describe that just a little bit for me?
Sure. Currently, what exists now is a high-pressure main and a low-pressure main. We get our direct service connection from the EID bulk meter at the top of Country Club. So you have two water mains that are providing service, one that is regulated and brought down to a low pressure, and as it travels down the hill, it builds up head pressure by the time it reaches individual residences and their service connections. We have another pressure that's called a high-pressure main, that's actually maintained at a relatively easy pressure connection from the EID bulk meter. The regulators are not needed for the pressure main as it travels down the hill, because they are going to be administered through the pressure of the regulating station that we're constructing, which is currently being regulated somewhat by the pneumatic tank. It's kind of, we have a couple sand filters and some pumps in a house, and it's not ideal, so that's why we have a project. The high-pressure main is kept at, again, a relatively low pressure feed as it is today, and will be continuing on that way for just the few homes that it serves up at the top of the hill. Now, pressure regulating, a pressure regulator, when it is connected to an individual service, is connected on the backside of the meter, so it's considered a private appurtenance. And as we looked at what the pressures would be on those individual residences, we felt that through the modeling that our design engineer provided, that the regulators are not a requirement. But should a property owner feel that it would be appropriate to install them? We absolutely do make that notification to them available, and that they could be installed then. There is some time now between the time that the system, after the improvements are installed, goes online. So they have over two months to look into that. So they do have some time to get those items if they should choose to do so.
So from an engineering standpoint, if individual property owners choose not to install a pressure regulator in their house, there could be a potential problem?
There could be a spike, but that's kind of a risk anybody runs without a regulator. There's quite a few residences throughout town where they've taken it upon themselves to install pressure regulators at individual services. It's something that's recommended through EID, that private homeowners do that. And, you know, pressure regulation to an individual house is not supposed to be the requirement of the city. We regulate pressure in the system.
Okay, great.
And so to take care and dedicate public funds to making sure that, you know, 2929 Country Club Drive, I'm just hypothetically picking an address, is, is that the city of Placerville? That the city of Placerville is not individually responsible for the improvements to a private connection, and so that's the reasoning behind that.
That makes sense, yeah. Yeah, taxpayer dollars to go to support private property.
Yes, ma'am.
So if a property owner doesn't choose to do this, the city will not be liable for any problems that could occur with this project. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
City is not liable?
That's my understanding. I mean, they can always come forward with a claim, but that's my understanding.
Okay. So then, how are we gonna get to the word out to these property owners about this issue? Because, you know, folks may or may not, you know, know about the need for pressure regulators, and the fact that the city's not gonna be liable if they choose not to do it.
We already have the letter prepared, and the address is ready to go.
Great, so we're gonna make sure that they get an actual copy at each residence?
Absolutely. I mean, yeah, they're neighbors, absolutely.
All right, fantastic. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate that explanation, and thanks for getting the word out to our friends and neighbors on Country Club.
Our pleasure.
Can I ask a question?
You may.
Are pressure regulators now kind of like standard equipment on new homes, or are they still a...
It should be. It is part of the EID standard, which we use as our default standard when it comes to our water distribution system, although we've selectively kind of modified a few of the standards to help us with maintenance of our system. But it should be.
But, but it's not required? I mean, if someone were to go in and build a house today, you don't go, "Hey, and have one of those?"
I would encourage it, and it's not officially required, but I would say, "Hey, you know, on your private side, when you're installing a meter, I would recommend that you install it regularly."
And they're not real expensive, are they?
No, like, you know, to have a plumber come in and do it, it's a few hundred dollars.
Oh, okay, all right, sounds good. Any other questions or comments from the city council?
Holy smoke.
Holy smoke.
I don't know where to start.
Well, you're up.
Mr. Saragosa, would you like to go first?
You're up.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Acuna?
Well, I've gone through three pressure regulators at my house. Mr. Yule laughs. I'm trying to think of what Brian's last name was, Yule Public Works Director.
Nunez.
Nunez.
It's my wife's uncle.
Thank you.
There you go.
And the number was three. The number was three regulators. He was the bearer of good news, and told me that there was like 150 pounds of hot pressure out in the street on Brendan Way. So anyway, they don't use the fire hydrant in front of my house anymore, and the pressure regulators don't fail. And it's about $700 to $900 for a plumber to come out and do that. Or at least it was about four years ago when they blew out the last regulator. And I thought that they were a part of a city water meter set.
They are not currently part of the city water meter set.
That's interesting.
I have a breakdown of those items that were provided, and it's not included in that.
I find that interesting, because that is putting somebody at risk, because I had over 100 and some pounds pressure in the house when it went out.
Really?
Yeah, so it is not, it is a serious thing. I was very lucky that I did not have a flood.
Yeah, appurtenances for houses will hold up to about 150 PSI.
And they like to be around 60. So, couple, three questions. This is an old project with me. I think my entire time on the council, we've been trying to get rid of this tank. When do you anticipate starting construction?
We are gonna be, pending the approval of the site in this evening, we would be issuing the notice to proceed to the contractor likely tomorrow, along with the contract for them to sign and execute. And then they would begin their initial efforts for submittals, et cetera, and it's about 30 days, 30 to 45 days away from starting.
So the tank would disappear sometime in January?
Likely.
Weather permitting?
Yes.
Okay, so if it doesn't disappear this time, I'm going to be upset. So it's actually water in the tank now. We're still using it. I've heard varying stories that it's been bypassed, it isn't bypassed, it is currently in service.
It is currently in service.
It has water in it, okay. And Rebecca, how many customers will we serve through this new bulk meter from EID? This $10,000 meter?
It's right around 60.
60?
Yeah, I mean, those are the direct connections that are affected by the project.
So that would be, I'm just trying to think of the old phases of airport, or no, golf course estates, or whatever it was called back in the '60s. So about 60 homes. Now, the question also, across the street from the tank, there is an existing, what I would call, substandard fire hydrant that's been covered up with a bag now for quite a while. Will it come back into service, one, as a part of this project?
Yeah, it's available to, and we do have it planned for replacement. We also, you know, recognize that there's a fair amount of fire hydrants within that vicinity that are in need of updating. You may notice in staff's report, we've included kind of a hefty contingency, and we can certainly allow for that, too, to, you know, get within a good project range.
The reason I, and I appreciate that information, the reason I bring it up is, the last two summers, we had transient campfires begin off of Barrett Drive, down on the 120-acre Lumsden property. And in following up with various neighbors' concerns in that area, one of the things that occurred to me is that we have 1960s-style fire hydrants that don't probably fit the terrain and today's equipment, and I just checked with the city manager, and, you know, apparently there weren't any CIP projects to really address the old, original subdivision fire hydrants that don't have the big steamer connection on them. So, on a hill, with that kind of fire exposure, with an area that is a very, very nice and well-kept neighborhood, I would, you know, it struck me that we have some responsibility there to do as much updating as we possibly can.
Agreed.
So I'm very happy to see this going forward, and the, do you have any idea what you think the pressure increase may be in the main once this new system is fully online?
I don't have that number with me available this evening, but my recollection was that, I mean, for the exact number, but my recollection was minimal, because we did model the system within that area.
Because I would be worried about anybody up there being used to it, kind of being at the top of the hill and at the end of the system at a very subtle pressure, older homes suddenly having a bunch of floods. And the city attorney smirked a little bit when there was that whole question about liability, so I would encourage us to move forward with lots of notifications.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Barelli?
No, I'm glad to see, I don't live up there, so I can't appreciate it like Mark and John can, but I'm sure it's...
We have great water pressure.
Oh, we're in our system.
Yeah, we are. We have great water pressure where we are.
But you're watching your point.
You know, but I'm happy for them up there.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't know what the person will do without the tank. It's kind of probably like a friend that they've had up there forever.
You know, one thing I would like to bring up, as you're talking about these, the hydrants. And for the longest time on Spring Street by the county offices there, there's a, one of the hydrants, and it took, I'm going to say, two or three years, and I kept questioning Rebecca and Steve what was going on. Finally, Steve shared with me about hydrants and how old ours are, and how you can, you can't get parts anymore, I guess, or it's very, very difficult. So I guess the, what you're talking about, Mark, and I have no idea what either you're talking about or I'm talking about, but I guess to replace a hydrant is very, very expensive.
Yes.
And so, in, so what do we do, what are we looking at?
If I'm hearing you correctly, you have concern about how we would be moving forward with replacing fire hydrants within, not just the project, but within the city.
Well, what Mark said about the new equipment not fitting the old equipment, et cetera. So, if it doesn't fit, what do you do?
You know, as far as what can be done, if you don't replace the hydrant outright, it kind of depends upon which hydrant it is. For example, there are some hydrants that were on Main Street that were removed that were actually, that were of the older style. They were functioning hydrants, but we removed and upgraded them for the same reason, and the reason why was to salvage the inner workings of those older fire hydrants to be able to use them on some hydrants throughout town that didn't work. Now, moving forward on projects, we do include upgrading as many localized facilities within a project that we possibly can, which includes fire hydrants. It also includes any kind of structure or appurtenances around pressure regulating stations, et cetera. You know, we do work with our public works staff on what they need to properly maintain and run those facilities. So, did that answer your question?
It does answer my question, and I, and I'm, in view of a lot of things that have happened, I'm anticipating problems, and I should look at it that way. But if you were, say, some of the older areas around here, that you're not doing a subdivision, and there's, you know, so I just wonder how, I'm sure you guys must check them, or the fire departments. The fire department, I think, used to check them, I don't know if I remember.
That may be part of the ongoing discussion on our fire safety in our community.
Yeah, so just thinking that, you know.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Excellent questions, thank you.
Thank you so much, and glad to see that's part of this project, too. That's great. City member of the public wish to address, have any comments on this item? Come on down. Good evening.
Councilmembers, just so I don't waste your time, are you talking about just the first item, or all?
All of them, all of them on item 12.2.
The first is just a general...
Bring the microphone to your face, thank you so much.
First is just a general suggestion, that there be more detail in the future. You have a lot of people who, in the public, have just this instrument to figure out what you're doing. I'm not sure how many people know what the Sierra Tank Bypass Project is, as the case for a number of these things. When you look at it, you wouldn't necessarily know. When it comes to describing Cedar Ravine, repairing a sewer line, how far out, how long is that going to be? Those kind of details, if it's in here, would be helpful. But my concern is number eight, and it has to do with Placerville Drive. It says crack seal and slurry. In plain English, if you could tell me what that is? Because I've taken that road a couple times a day for the last few days. I didn't see where it's a problem, I thought that was, Placerville Drive had been repaved. So if you could explain what you're doing, and does the fact that you're doing some repairs to it mean that you're not going to be expanding the width of Placerville Drive anytime soon? So it'd be helpful to know that.
We'll get your question answered, thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other comments? We knew you'd want to comment on this, Sue. Good evening.
The big reason why I'm here tonight.
Hallelujah.
Yes, this is a, hallelujah, we're finally going to do this. This was on the list for the original first-cut Measure H projects to get done. So that was, what, eight years ago? And now we're finally getting to it. Sue Rodman, Measure H and L Committee, and so I'm glad we're going to do it. I would encourage us to go ahead and put pressure regulators in for people. When they did the Partie Big Cut Water Line, and all of a sudden I had a new water line, and I had 180 pounds of pressure, and it blew out my entire sprinkler system, and I'm lucky it didn't blow anything out in my house, but it was a little expensive to get that all repaired. So I think, you know, if it's only a few hundred dollars to go ahead and do it at the same time, just do it for people. I think that the goodwill that you would generate by going ahead and putting pressure regulators in when you're doing these new water lines would more than pay itself back. And pressure regulators are, they're essential when you, if you get, oh, too much pressure, you can blow out the plumbing in your house as well. I think probably I should be lucky that it only blew up all of the regulator valves on my sprinkler system and didn't destroy my house. So I would really encourage us to go ahead and put in pressure regulators as part of the delivery system from the city.
All right, thank you for your comments, and thank you for all your work on the Measure HL Committee. We sure appreciate it. Anyone else? With that, I'll bring it back to the council for action. And Mr. Smith, I would like to answer your question here. You talked about the $5,000 from Placerville Drive. That's actually a budget liquidation, so when Placerville Drive was repaved, we have $5,000 left over, and so that's being added to this project. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. The crack seal and slurry from Rayloyer Drive headed east was, we did receive a savings from that project, and that's what the savings being...
And we're paying it forward and putting it to good use somewhere else, so, great, yes, thank you. And, see, I do know our, I do know our staff report did look at the optional bid to cover private residential pressure regulators, and that would have been an additional $28,000 of money that we didn't have, you know, in this project.
Yes, ma'am. Actually, the bid price that came in, and I appreciate Councilmember Acuna, or Vice Mayor Acuna's input on how much pressure regulator cost was, the bid price came in at $1,500 each.
Oh, wow.
So quite a bit higher.
Yes. And that's why this notification to these residences is so important, so they can make informed decisions, and, you know, just appreciate a robust outreach on that.
That's what I wanted to ask about the letters. Are you going to go into that detail about, about pressure regulators and how...
We have covered that, you know, if you feel inclined that you would like to add one, you're welcome to do so, and kind of explaining the project. We do include a project exhibit.
Encourage them to do that, and explain why, is that true?
Exactly, tell them that they, you know, what Sue just said and Mark just said, I mean, you know, how dangerous it can be.
I do want to make one clarification on the Partie project. Ms. Rodman's service actually did have a regulator included as part of the plans. It got missed in construction, and that was identified later, and they went back in and added it. There was, you know, quite a few challenges on that project between, you know, essentially our contractor having to build the project twice due to manufacturer defects, et cetera.
Oh, I remember.
So that one was missed. We did know that she would be receiving kind of a large jump in pressure and had planned for that accordingly, like we do whenever if that situation does arise.
I just think it's really stressed to people that how important it is, that maybe they should take advantage of getting doing it now, you know.
Any other further council comments?
Actually, I have a question, not to beat pressure regulators up too much. If the pressure, why, if the pressure regulator is on the house side of the water meter, if you were to buy them for people, wouldn't that be a gift of public funds? So technically, you couldn't actually do that, can you? I'm asking.
I can create a theory that would, I think, justify buying those if you are doing it to prevent liability, and you're doing that to prevent potential exposure for liability. I think in that situation, it could be considered a valid public expense.
Hmm, okay. But then anybody could walk in the door and say, I want one of those things, couldn't they?
Well, no, that's a discretionary decision.
Well, I understand that, but outside of the project, I mean, if all of a sudden, a very, very understandable project-related thing, I understand it, but then, once you did it, somebody on Jones Street could come in and say, hey, I want a pressure regulator. Why do you not care about my plumbing blowing?
And you'd have to look at the unique facts relating to each situation. It may be that you could say, somebody could say, yes, you've got precedent here, my situation's exactly the same as theirs. Or you could say, no, it's different, the pressure here is going to be of a different level, et cetera. It's not necessary.
Huh. It sounds like, it feels like a can of worms you don't want to, I don't know, it would seem like a can of worms you don't want to open.
That you don't want to open?
Yeah, I mean, that, you know, that's fine. I mean, it's not a big issue right now, but I'm just saying.
I definitely think, as City Engineer has indicated, we need to make, people know what's going on.
Yeah, that part I like.
Give them the opportunity.
And give them an opportunity as part of this project to go in and do it, because you're going to be monkeying around with all that plumbing anyway, so you might as well say, hey, if we're here, we can bring in forces and you can pay for it, but it's a good idea, and...
Well, isn't it kind of like when we were doing, talking about the backflow requirements?
Yeah, that's a point.
Can I, I just have a thought.
Let, I'm sorry, let's, Councilmember Saragosa weigh in on this?
No.
Yeah, now, after all this. Actually, no, I'm fine.
All right. Vice Mayor Acuna.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Clarici, for bringing them up again, because you have brought up, and I'm sitting here thinking about the various claims that Mr. Warren has had to process due to water damage, whether it was gray sewer water or freshwater during the last two or three years, especially during the heavy rainstorms, whose water backed up where. Those costs can skyrocket just in a heartbeat. We were in the 50, 70, $100,000 range very, very quickly. This project is moving forward during the holidays, a very distracting time for most of us, good time, and, but the folks are going to overlook this, and think if we had one house up there on Country Club where the folks were away for three or four weeks, or even a night, during this new pressure going in, and we flooded that house, we could very easily do $50,000 worth of damage. People could be home and we could still do $50,000 worth of damage. So, I have a concern about giving them away. I mean, I have had, we finally figured out why mine was blowing, my neighbor still has the original one that's 35 or 40 years old.
Oh, really?
Okay, so, there is an expense with that, but I think what we probably should do is something similar to what we used to do when we hooked up new electrical service, we would verify the electric voltage.
Mm-hmm.
And we would write it down, and we would, and it was a permanent record of the job. So, since we know we're in an old neighborhood that may not have pressure, now, maybe they're already going to do this, but I think the day we cut this system over, we need to have the forces available to go and check the, document the water pressure at every single house. And if it's a problem, give the people the option of shutting it off until they can get it repaired, or accepting the liability of allowing this, you know, and it could be 100 pounds, we won't know until we, until we really do it. City, I would love to hear from the City Engineer.
That's a great suggestion, and we're happy to accommodate that. The other thing, too, I really want to notarize the difference on this is, you know, Main Street, we replaced water services. And we did wait until, you know, it was a couple of instances where there was a valve on the back of a toilet that did fail, and we tuned it to where, when we replaced the services, we shut the service off at the meter and waited until somebody arrived to turn it back on to make sure everything worked fine, which is a precautionary measure that we certainly could take. The other thing, too, is, you know, on Main Street, replaced water services. On Partie, we replaced water services. This project does not replace water services. But one thing that came out of Partie that we learned, you know, we, as we do these jobs, we learn new things each time, is there was a few instances where we went to replace a water service, or we even touched the water service, and the private water service literally fell apart in our hands.
Right, right.
And then we ended up chasing it halfway up front yard and replacing a private water system for up to a particular length to get it to be suitable conditions. So when we say opening a can of worms, it's also opening a trench, too. So just some thoughts, you know, to put that in everybody's mind as potential concerns or liabilities as well.
I appreciate that caution and detail, and can you let us, what is the timeline on this project, Rebecca?
Pardon, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. What is the timeline on this project for, from the notification to the, you know, finishing of the project?
It is about 60 days, maybe even more.
Okay, so folks will have plenty of time...
Weather permitting, too.
Right, to make informed decisions. So it's not like we're going to be doing this during the holidays, and, you know...
She's going to put it online in January, right?
It'll be, it'll be some time, but yeah, it won't be online during Christmas, though.
You're right, okay, right. I feel comfortable with the way the staff is directing this process, given, you know...
Director Rivas had some comments that he wanted to...
Absolutely.
Oh, sure, why not?
Director Rivas.
Yeah, if I may, this was debated quite a bit amongst staff, and I'm sure Rebecca can, you know, chime in if I misspeak, but basically what you're looking at, $28,000 was an estimate for replacement, I think that was seven, seven homes where there is a slim possibility of a spike in water pressure that could damage the house. That's why we didn't, we weren't looking at doing all 60, but just these seven. But the, but from all the modeling and what the engineers were telling me is that it's slim to none, that they could see a spike in the water pressure. But one thing I want to add, too, is why we sort of decided not to do it despite a slim risk, is because once you, once you touch the private side, there's sort of an implied warranty on the side of the city, and we don't want to all of a sudden, you know, a year from now, two years from now, get a call from the homeowner, hey, your valve isn't working, your regulator's not working, or something's wrong here, and then we got to go out and fix it.
Okay, great. Well, with that, I feel confident moving staff's recommendation on this item.
Second.
All right, may we have the roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Barelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Clarici?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye. Thank you, I'd like to thank our staff for all their work on this and look forward to getting this accomplished. All right. All right. Item number 12.3, and the item before us is to review the proposed, request for proposals for the reuse of Historic City Hall and authorize staff to release the proposals. Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you recall, back in September, the council awarded a contract to, a lease, or a lease to El Dorado Arts Council for the use of the first floor of both Confidence and Immigrant Jane Historic City Hall buildings. Prior to that time, there'd been some discussion about potentially a long-term lease for a program, a plan that the Arts Council had put together to restore those buildings and put that reuse plan into place. As we looked at that further, the recommendation at that time was, let's go back and look at this a little bit. Let's award a short-term lease, and let's review this and put out a request for proposals to see what other options for use of those buildings might be out there. And at that time, it was proposed that we do that this fall and get that out for potential applicants to propose uses for those buildings. So, that's the purpose of this item, is to prepare this RFP, to have you review that, make sure this does what we hope to do in getting proposals from other organizations to look at. And so, we put this RFP together, includes a schedule, as you can see on the front page of the staff report that's in there. And it basically requires a fairly detailed proposal to look at how those buildings could be reused, could, would be reused in the future. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. You're welcome to make changes to that. We can either bring it back at a later date, or we can simply make the changes tonight and staff can get this put out to the public. So, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Does the council have any questions at this point?
Am I right?
Okay. All right. At this point, then, since there's no council questions, I'd like to open this item up for a public comment, please. Good evening again.
I think doing an RFP is a good idea, simply so it doesn't look like we have pre-selected El Dorado Arts Council and given them something that's not been open for competition for anybody else. I hope that they end up being our best proposal that comes in, because I really think they're doing a good job. But I think that we also need to look at, we don't want to give anybody a free ride, so to speak, or a monopoly. So, this, when you put it out for an RFP, then it opens the doors and everything is fair. So, I think it's a good idea.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Anyone else?
Kirk Smith. You all know the history of the buildings. They have a lot, as you know, about it. But here's the specific suggestions I'd have. One is you have an engineering report about the defects in the building. That needs to be on the public website, and the proposal needs to be linked to that. It's not possible to have fair consideration when one group's already had a chance to review that. Everybody needs to look at it. Secondly, there needs to be the widest distribution of this information, not something that goes merely in the fine print of the back of the Mountain Democrat for legal notices or something like that, or on the website. We have a very able city manager. I'm sure you can find all kinds of places to get the word out as far as San Francisco and things like that. So, you have bigger money options available to you. I just keep in mind that a few years ago, EID had a reservoir that was appraised a half million dollars by their own appraiser. They only advertised it by sending out letters to 12 realtors, not on multiple listings or whatever. And what do you know? They only got one bid and they sold it for $50,000. That's what I think is an effort to avoid. So, the wider exposure you get, the better. The other is that the, again, the widest exposure, but also that you have an item in here that concerns me, which is, you're talking about sale. I don't think I've ever heard that word in this venue before. But number four, on the actual proposal requirements, it says, "Ownership." Provide a description of how the buildings will be owned, organization ownership, city-owned, with organization lease, et cetera. I think you need to have some, that's a very extreme thing that shouldn't be considered at this time, without giving the public notice that that's what you have in mind, is to making that available. The other thing is that the time you have for the proposal of January is not long enough. You already have one party who's been in discussions, you know, for, you know, 15 months or more. So, in order for someone to come in with a serious proposal to be competitive, they need more time to mount up all the things that are described in those eight pages. So, those are the kind of things I should, think would be important to take into consideration. I remember years ago, some of you know the name Bacassini. I remember seeing her still before she died. It was about eight years ago. Of all the things she could complain about, and there were lots, like health, what did she complain about? The city trying to sell the city hall. My mother remembers when the second floor was used as the county library. Alan Kembelik would talk about the fire department, because you see that famous photograph of, they got the hand pump drawn by horses. And then we learned when we turned up Main Street that there's all these cisterns down Main Street, and that's what they used to get the water to fight the fires, where we had our own paradise problems in the 50s and 60s of the 1800s. So, there's a lot of history there, and you have nothing in here about making sure that any changes done to the building are done consistent with the historic considerations that you have adopted by resolution before. Those are the kind of considerations I think should go into this proposal. No sooner than February to have them in, if not much later, just so you have an equal shot at it. I think the concerns that we heard from Ms. Rodman were appropriate. But in order to be truly equal, and so it doesn't look like you're giving special advantage, it needs to be a longer period so others have that chance to study the background.
Thank you so much. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? All right, with that, I'll close it, close the public comment and bring it back to the council. I do actually, actually-
No, go right ahead.
All right. I do actually have quite a few thoughts on this proposal that I'd like to give for council consideration at this point. Let's start with page two. I do think it is important for the applicants to get the information on the condition of the building. So, on this RFP, I would like to add Mr. Smith's suggestion of the link that they can review the engineer's report on this, so they understand the conditions of the building and what they're dealing with. I think that's an excellent suggestion. All right. Let's start with 2C under the description. And let's see, I am on page-
Four of eight.
Four of eight. Thank you. Right now, the current language reads that they'd like, we'd like details regarding the expected number of visitors on an annual basis. I don't think that gives us the information we need as far as, you know, are they gonna be bringing 100,000 people? But is that only in December, and it will lie dormant the rest of the year? I have proposed a reword of that. Provide a description on how the uses will enhance the business climate in Historic Downtown Plasterville, including details regarding expected number of visitors on a monthly, quarterly, and/or seasonal basis. Please also provide a detail of the proposed hours of operation. I think that will give us a clearer, and I've given these to the city manager and the council to follow, that it'll give us a clearer description of what the project is and how it will enhance our downtown district. On item three, under financial plan, between items A and B, I would also like to propose that we add language that says, "Provide a timeline for your project regarding necessary fundraising activities and building improvements." I think that's a critical addition, that if someone were to bring your proposal forward and they have a good idea, but they're not planning on bringing anything to fruition in, you know, maybe 10 years, that will be something important for us to consider. So, we need to know what the proposed timeline of an applicant's, of an application is. On item, on page, under, let's see, item number 10, under the review of proposals on page six. Currently, we leave this rather vague when we say, "Proposals will be reviewed by a committee determined by the Plasterville City Council," and it has other language in there. You know, if this is to go forward tonight, and the RFP is to be released tomorrow, we need to give applicants full disclosure as to what that process is gonna look like. So, you know, let's clarify that right now. And my recommendation is that the language reads, "Proposals will be reviewed by and recommended by a council ad hoc subcommittee comprised of the mayor and vice mayor and two members of the city staff." And then the rest of that language is fine, and staff can make the rest of the wording of the paragraph reflect this change. But that's generally how we've, you know, we have the precedence in the past for appointing an ad hoc council subcommittee, just like we did with the cannabis regulations, that I think that would be an effective way to move through this process, because they are retained by the city. The other thing is, is I agree that, you know, January, certainly not long enough, but that's actually not what the timeline initially suggests. I do have changes to the RFP timeline, and they are noted on your- Right here, under the top.
Oh, up at the top.
Here's my suggestions for the RFP timeline, that we approve and release the RFP today, so tomorrow, per council approval. The deadline for the submission of the RFP questions, let's say, by January 8th. So, that gives any applicants, you know, through the holidays, the ability to ask questions of our city staff. So, any questions on this RFP after the holidays. And then, a city will release answers to the submitted RFP questions on January 22nd. So, that gives staff two weeks to respond to any questions. And my understanding is those questions will go out to all the applicants? Yeah, so everyone has all the information that every other applicant has. And then proposals due at the city manager's office on February 19th. So, that gives about a month for an applicant to respond to the questions and to, you know, finalize their proposal. And then the subcommittee review of proposals happen between February 19th and March 5th. And that gives us the subcommittee, you know, plenty of time to review all the applicants. And then to have the open public meeting either March 6th, 7th, or 8th, depending on town hall availability. And that's the, for an opportunity for the public to come, to hear all the proposals, to weigh in, to give their comments before it actually goes to the city council for recommendation. So, I, you know, very much support that full, transparent, open, public process. And then I would like to add a new addition to the timeline that states that the subcommittee finalizes recommendations to the city council between March 11th and 15th. Because right now, we just have an open public meeting and then it goes to city council. So, I'd like, I think it's appropriate to have the subcommittee, you know, weigh all the public testimony, the comments, the proposals themselves, and then finalize their recommendations to the city council. And then we, the city council decides this item on May, March 26th, so they hear the item. So, those are my suggestions for that. And this is also concurrent with this, the county will be embarking on an RFP process with the old DA building and the annex.
The old one?
The old post office, the D's building, the old historic post office and the annex. And, you know, we've always looked at this corner kind of holistically, you know, and we'll see what comes out of both processes. But the county will be embarking on their process, they have said, probably around January. And so, we want to kind of have our processes work well together. So, I think this timeline accomplishes the idea that the applicants have plenty of time to weigh in, but also dovetails a little better with the county's process. So, those are my suggestions. Any comments or questions from the fellow council members?
I have responded to a fair number of requests for proposals in my professional career. I think most of your suggestions are good ones. I would not actually put that the proposals will be reviewed and recommended by a council ad hoc committee, and I would not tell anybody who's on it. The mother lode of all things, when you are writing a proposal, is knowing who's gonna be on the interview panel, because you will tailor everything you do to those people. And so, I would suggest that we, the language in there is fine. The city council will determine how those, who's gonna be in the room. I guarantee you, if anybody responds to this RFP, they will be noodling around, trying to figure out who the heck's gonna be on there, because you spend a lot of time trying to figure out who you're gonna be talking to. I mean, you can sort of guess the players, but I think that that way you get a, I think you get a more thoughtful proposal and not one that's just tailored to the five or six people that are gonna be in the room. So, that would be one of my things.
So, you're saying not-
No, I think the original language is fine, you know, whatever. It says, I read it here and it's fine. Proposals will be viewed by a committee determined by the Plasterville City Council. Leave it at that. Don't give them any clues as to who's gonna be in the room with them, because-
Because that doesn't describe the process of how and when that will be chosen.
They'll just, you know, some, but some five people up here are gonna choose four people, and they're gonna decide that. So, I would not put that in the RFP. The timeframe, timeframe changes are adequate. Honestly, though, people that are really interested in this project, they'll spend Christmas Day writing a proposal. This idea of it being over the holidays is nonsense. It doesn't, like I said, I have responded to proposals that were due January 2nd, which means I was working all the way through Thanksgiving and Christmas and all the holidays, if it was really important to me. And so, but if we want to give them more time, the consultants or whatever group, I'm gonna use the word consultant, I actually mean group, they'll love it, because it gives them more time. I like compressing the decision-making time on it. I think that's a good idea. But yeah, I think, I would not tell anybody who's gonna be on the committee. I think that that should be special knowledge, because you know, you've been on that side of the desk, and finding out who's on that committee is like gold. And hopefully, it's people you know. So, it kind of depends on who is doing this.
I'm still not clear. Do you still, so you think it should-
I think the language in the document in number, in part 10 is fine the way it is.
No, so, but you're suggesting that it not be the city council?
No, no. You can put anybody up there you want, but I'm just saying, you just don't-
So, what I, okay, so, in answer to that, I'm thinking that you're wrong, because we're five city council members, and we're all kind of, you know, I don't think anybody would cozy up to whoever-
But we have a code of ethics that we have to-
Exactly. I mean, we do it all the time, so I'm thinking-
I'm not saying that they're gonna come and offer you a cup of coffee to be, but they're gonna know.
Well, I don't think it matters.
They're gonna know, like, "Oh, Mark, well, respectfully, you're wrong." I have been in my share of interviews, and knowing who's on the panel ahead of time is gold. It is. Trust me. I know. Okay? You spend lots of time trying to noodle that through things. Now, granted, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out that probably one or more people from the council is likely to be part of that decision-making process.
If it's gonna be the city council, it has to be.
Well, no, no. You could have-
That's what I just asked you.
You could have people on, somebody in these five chairs is gonna make a decision on who gets to do this. In the existing language, in the existing language, this proposal will be viewed by a committee determined by the Plasterville City Council. It's theoretically possible that you may not have any council members on that committee, because you may say, "I've found four individuals, some staff and some other people, that would actually do a better job." They would, they would get the information. You may decide that that's not what you want to do. The other thing, too, is you've kind of, if you, if for some reason you were to decide you don't want to have city council members on the committee, you've kind of told everybody that's exactly what you're gonna do. This leaves you more flexibility to put the people in the room. As the process is going forward, you will determine the people in the room that should be in there doing that, doing the interview. And you may decide, like, "Yeah, we want somebody from the city." But after things evolve a little bit over the next couple of months, you might decide, "Oh, we don't really want a city staff person. We want X person in the room to do that." So, I'm just saying, from a purely responding to the proposal, you should not tell the applicants who's gonna be there. That's my feeling.
All right. Councilmember Saragosa?
Okay, I do agree. I mean, I've done plenty of RFPs, and it is very helpful to know who's on that ad hoc, if there is one, because you kind of know that whatever recommendations they're gonna make, this is likely to be that the council or whoever's making the final decision will take that into, will really weigh that well and could be the final outcome of it. So, there is something to be said about having council members on the ad hoc. So there is something to be said about having council members on the ad hoc. And on the other hand, if they're going to be on there, they're still going to come back to, for a five vote in front of everybody here. So you kind of get two bites at the apple that way as well, if there's any questions. I mean, I guess you could limit any, any conversations or we have to disclose anything that we had, we had outside conversations with people that wanted to talk to, a council member that was on this ad hoc committee, could disclose any of that information if anyone had any issues with it. But, I think I'm probably going towards a non-city council committee. Maybe it's staff, maybe it's a couple of community members. That way we're, we get the information from them and then we're able to make that decision. I do like the idea of an ad hoc committee, though. I think it's good to have that filtered through. So whether that's, you know, members of other commissions or whether that's people that we appoint as a body, I think that's, that's still a good idea, though. But I, I'm going to lean towards not council members being on the ad hoc.
All right. Councilmember Burley.
One thing I was, Mr. Smith was talking about how we didn't mention anything about the historic value. And on page three of A, on, under description, on B, it says, "Describe how the use would affect the historic character of the buildings. Would it maintain the historic character? Include descriptions and/or drawings to show how you would promote the historic character." So I think we've done due diligence there, so.
Thank you. Ms. Maracunia.
I was still thinking through the makeup of the committee. The regards to the other recommended changes, I think that are, they're very appropriate. And that's, the revisions to the timeline, I think are also appropriate. The pros and cons of the, the releasing the ad hoc committee now versus doing it, looking at this, if we were to adopt this timeline, the city council would have to identify this process in early February or late January, which isn't, because we've got to know where these things are going, we've got to know who they're going to. And this group is going to make a recommendation on the preferred submittal, is that correct?
To review the proposals and then to bring a recommendation forward.
And so that would not take any of the, let's say there was three applications that came, three RFPs came forward. They would rank, they would just be ranking those RFPs, correct? So they would, all three of them would come forward for the full council review?
They, they could unless, you know, you may get 10 and five of them may just be grossly inadequate and not really address the issue. So it would just depend, but I think that the council would probably see all of the proposals and, but there would be the top ones recommended.
If we did it that way, then this committee, however they're made up, they're going to be making a recommendation and taking people out of the room.
Yeah. Yeah. They're the first sieve.
Yeah. So I, I'm not sure, between now and even this condensed timeline, how we're going to get that done and, I don't know. Does anybody know how many we're going to get? Does anybody know?
We have no idea. We have absolutely no idea. And that's why I think it's...
This is a condensed time of year. I mean, January or February disappear, boof, gone.
And the workload on our staff to, to figure that and to do that just adds another layer. It makes sense to clarify it tonight and move forward with this, with the RFP process.
Yeah. I certainly want to respect John's and, and Michael's experience in the field, never been involved with RFPs as far as producing one and knowing, I absolutely hear what you're saying, you know your audience. They go, oh, Mark likes this kind of thing and he'll like that and yeah. Everybody that works in this field knows everybody's, we do it with Caltrans. I mean, with big county projects, well, we'll go and talk to so-and-so. So it's a very valid point. I'm just not comfortable yet as to how we're going to get this executed and be fair to the people that bring this forward and make sure that that committee brings forward the best project for that building.
So if we didn't decide it tonight, we'd have, the council would have to decide before February 19th, when the proposals are due to the city manager's office, so.
And I, I totally disagree with the argument about the RFP. I, I think we can be trusted as a council, just as we're trusted with a lot of stuff that's thrown at us.
This is not about them trying to bribe you. This is about the way they make the message, the way they present the information to you can be skewed.
Okay, I'm just taking myself personally.
I understand.
Nobody's going to, you know, they don't know how I think. They don't know how, I don't know how, about everything, so.
The one thing I would say, I mean, too, the idea of having an ad hoc committee to provide a recommendation is because it is such a, I mean, it's a jewel of our community, the buildings, and to have a little bit more community input into that process before we make a final decision up here, I think is a good thing.
So would it be similar to the, the 10 people that you had to, like on the courthouse committee? Is that kind of what you're suggesting?
I think probably smaller, but yeah, some similar.
It would be five people, but it would be...
Maybe three, yeah.
And the language in here would allow the council to make that determination sometime, you know, between, before February 19th, so.
Yeah, I would think somebody with a, you know, has a historical, I know we've had people on like the Historical Advisory Commission before that had expertise in some of these areas with older buildings, with rehabilitation. I mean, it might not be bad to have a couple of, and when we have, either they're business owners in town or they're residents, that maybe wouldn't be a bad idea to have them, you know, give us their thoughts on it before it comes to us.
I'd also like to suggest on the proposal submittal, the proposer must submit one, one, one original and one copy. If these are plans, if they have like spreadsheets, you know, big, large layout sheets and stuff, we may want to up that to a couple more copies. Once again, they'll be happy to submit them to you. And that then takes the onus off of staff maybe having to reproduce large pieces of paper that are very expensive.
That's a good idea.
So I would suggest having probably one original, three copies, and then the thumb drive thing, obviously.
Having prepared a lot of these, I think that's very much in line with the, yeah, how we, how we should approach it.
So what is the will of the council on this item?
I would like to move the staff recommendation on the RFP with the 12.3 suggested wording provided by the mayor, except for item 10, which I would think should be, which should stay as it is written in the, in the RFP document itself. And I would suggest that we add to, and let me find it again so I know exactly what it is, under item seven, proposal submittal, on the very first item, proposals must submit one original document and three copies of the proposal and, and then one digital copy on a thumb drive. And I think that's it. Was there anything else?
Did you, excuse me, did you include the revised timeline?
I, everything on this piece of...
Oh, everything on there, okay. Thanks, yes, you just said.
I'm sorry, I guess I should have listened.
No, you did say that.
RFP timeline, 2C under description reword, 3 financial plan, and not 10X.
Leave 10 as written, but as the best...
Leave 10 as written, yeah, but everything that's on here.
I'll go ahead and second the motion.
All right. There's no funding of, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So this is going to be released tomorrow?
Tonight?
Yes, so that's great. All right, well, thank you all.
I guess there's one more item and in terms, and I think it's a good one, we didn't talk about it because we got buried in other things, but the distribution, we should, you know, really make, take, really take care to make sure that it gets distributed out in a, in the broadest con, it's kind of a tough one, though, because, I mean, who do you send it to? It's, it, it is somewhat difficult. In fact, it's really challenging, kind of thinking about it. Anyway, yeah.
I'm open to suggestions, so, yeah, it's going to be difficult.
Yeah, I'll noodle on it, too, to think if there's any other distribution area that we can go to.
Who would, you know, it's kind, because the problem is, who would be interested in this? And it's kind of like, well, in theory, no one or everyone. It could be like historical groups, it could be a commercial person, it could be, you know, I know one of the ideas, I think it was Lexi Boger was here, talking about perhaps an organization that is part of the wine industry wanting to have a wine boutiquey kind of thing in the building, you know, there could be, that kind of a group could come, I mean, there's, I mean, the possibilities are endless and so how do you, how do you, that, you know, usually you do an RFP, it's to like engineers or landscape architects or consultants, you know, whatever.
Well, social media is a powerful tool to them, so we'll look for ways to distribute that.
Yeah, yeah, so maybe we get it out there and then, and then really encourage everyone who is in, who has weighed in on this to, to make sure that everybody knows about it. I, I, you know, because it's not something that is very straightforward. It's not like we need to have someone design a building for us. Well, that's easy enough or, or due to engineering, it's just, anyway.
All right. Thank you. All right. Item 12.4, review the proposed capital outlay budget and provide direction for staff. Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you recall, during our budget process this last year, we had quite a bit of discussion about our capital outlay budget, which we had quite a few items on there which we weren't sure we could afford and we had some concerns about. And during that time, council asked us to bring back a complete capital outlay budget and an equipment replacement program to use going forward. So for about the last five months, I guess, six months, we've been working on that, trying to put this together. And I want to thank all of my department heads who are here tonight, all of them, that, that helped this process because they put a lot of work into that to make sure we had all of our equipment. I'll give a, a special shout out probably to the man running the camera back here, Jason Tanger, who put together the computer portion of that and all the computer-related equipment and did a great job on that to put that together. So what we've put together for you here, we have two spreadsheets attached to your staff report tonight. The first is an entire, or a summary of our entire equipment list. So this includes all equipment, including vehicles, computer equipment, et cetera, as thorough as we could. We think we've captured everything on here. And as you can see from that, if you were to look out to the, the total on that, the, the first page at the very last column on the bottom, you see that total is $3.7 million of total equipment. And if you go back to column one for 2018, 2019, you'll see that the total for all departments is a total of $812,000 that it would take to replace the equipment that we've identified that should be replaced in the current year. Obviously, that's a huge number for us to come up with in this one year. But, and I, I need to also add that when we did this, for example, for computer equipment, we established a time of six years, which is the maximum life for, for computers. For just a de, regular desktop computer, other equipment may have a longer or shorter lifespans, but as a general rule, we use six years for computer equipment. We've found that for some of our computer equipment, it can last longer than six years. For example, some of it may not be used that often. And so, you know, to think that it could, could go longer than six years, we think is feasible. So we want to do a little bit more work on that in total of computer list. And so we will continue to do that and bring back a recommendation to you on those and potentially how to fund those also. Your second spreadsheet that we established, that we put together for you tonight, includes a list of items that we feel are critical to our needs right now. Some of these, these include, as you can see, some computer equipment, some are vehicles. For example, in our police department, we have a, a need for patrol vehicles, which is, is critical. And then we have some other, some other items also related to that, trucks for public works and et cetera. What I did is I asked my staff to go back and look at this list and I said, because we had been talking about this, I said, what, what items are severe, severely critical, I'll put it that way, that we cannot wait another couple of months to, to get going on these. And this is the list of items that they came up with. And you can see, this is not a small number either, this is $336,000. I will tell you, that's not a number that I could go out and probably and ask my, well, I could, ask my finance director, say, give me $336,000.
He's going to fall on the floor.
He, he would choke up a little bit, but he would, he would find a way probably, but that's probably not the best way to do that. So what we did is we looked at this and we said, what, what could we do? And we had broke it down into a couple of different areas. We looked at, you know, what could we probably do with cash reserves pretty much immediately? And we identified that amount and that is in your staff report. It's basically one vehicle and then the smaller of the, the smaller items that are on that list. And the total for that, and I'm trying to find, is $78,530 that we would propose to take from reserves. Now, I will say, there is a little bit more work that Dave has asked to do in verifying those numbers and verifying the reserves to make sure we're not going to put anything in jeopardy. So we're not actually asking you to approve those officially tonight, just give us, go ahead, say, yes, you're moving in the right direction and, and then come back with those finals. The remaining amounts, we would look at doing through a capital lease program, if that's a desire of council. So we will go back and continue to obtain estimates to do it through, through a capital lease or a financing method to bring back to you at a, a later date for those amounts. I want to mention that, for example, for, one of the critical items that we want to try and get to you as quickly as possible, for the police vehicles, there is approximately a six-month lead time in getting those vehicles. So we, we want to get that, at least that decision that you can tell us, go ahead and allow us to order it, even perhaps if we don't have the finance, final financing mechanism secured, give us the ability to move forward to at least order those, not tonight, but possibly at your next meeting, we hope to be ready to ask you for that. So, and then we will continue to work on this and, and come back with a proposal to move this out to where we can look at this and say, according to this five-year schedule, this is how we would propose that you fund these items going forward. It's my hope that we can come up with an amount or a way to fund these immediate items, that I'm using the number of the $812,000. It may be somewhat less than that, it may be around that number. But then, so that in future years, we're looking at hopefully much more reasonable amounts. There's a pretty big one, a few, few years out there, that's the $333,000. But the rest of them are under $200,000 and, and hopefully that is something that we can find a way to fund on an ongoing basis so that we're not put in this position again to where we have in a huge amount that we have to make up for in the, going forward. So with that, I will answer any questions you may have, or like I said, our staff is here that can answer those questions also, that put a lot of this information together for you.
Okay. Any council questions at this point?
I have a question. Cleve, you talked about, we seem to really, we're always getting back to the police vehicles. We talked about a lease program like they have over in Auburn. Is that, have you looked into that or is that something you're going to present to us or...
We have. The chief has looked at that program and he has given us a proposal on that that we can consider. The question is whether or not we do it through a lease program like that or we do our own capital lease program, which would be similar.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because you're stressing that we need to order this, but if we went with a different program, then we wouldn't be ordering them, would we? I mean, if...
Right, but they would still need to order them. There would still be a lead time, I believe, to get those, right, Chief? So there would still be that long lead time.
Would that mess up the process, though, if we...
No, not necessarily, depending on how we decide to do it. But we would like to compare that program with us doing a capital lease on our own and see, you know, what, what pans out best.
Good question, yeah. Councilmember Clorici.
Can these Dodges be bought locally?
Probably not because they're probably on a state bid somewhere that's not part of it.
Yeah, they're on a state bid. We looked at that, that was obviously my first choice, but they're on a state bid and an out-of-area vendor.
That always kills us. Gosh, we have to spend the money, we want to spend it locally.
Well, do we still, all right, do they start, oh, because, or do we pay a sales tax because we're a government? So the one tax would come back to us, right, though?
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, okay, all the add-ons.
That's good.
There's a lot of add-ons.
That makes it easier.
Well, yeah, I mean, it would be nice to just buy them down the street. I understand the...
So the other one that you're talking about is number one, the desktop, isn't, didn't you, didn't they stress that that's really crucial?
Well, all, all of these...
I mean, they all are, but...
Yeah, all of these are, are, these are critical items, this entire page. So we want to move as quickly as possible and our plan is to come back at your next meeting on the 27th of this month with a recommendation of how to move forward.
Sure appreciate this, bringing this forward because I know we have a lot of critical needs in our city and all of our departments and... And I know the Council was, it was important for us to get those addressed, so thank you for bringing back a plan.
This is something we've been asking for, and we, and thank you so much for getting that done.
Any other further questions or comments before we open it up?
Are we, what are you asking us to do here tonight, Cleve? Just review this?
Basically, review and tell us, yes, you're on the right track. Give us two more weeks, one more meeting to make the, some final recommendations to you and to make sure that we're, we're where we need to be, and then we'll be ready to go.
Okay.
Can I, do you want to comment or I'll comment?
Please, go ahead.
Where's this microphone at? It has a hotspot and you have to be careful. So I really want to, I appreciate everything staff has done. I know that this was, budget is always an issue, and we went through this back in May and June. And I was the one that was probably most adamant about trying to make a one-time expenditure from reserves to get us caught up, because we had had to shut down our city programs and our equipment and facilities and what have you so severely in 2008, that we've never really, I mean, it's been 10 years, and it shows. And I would have Dave write the big check, but I'm not his city manager, Cleve. And I appreciate this. What we've gotten to this point here is, and I, Dave, I sometimes see these charts and I go, "Oh, no, it's another Dave Warren chart." But I appreciate this one, because it shows us the reality of the pain that we're in right now at the $812,000. So we have the big list, that Dave was good enough and with the help of all the department heads to work out five-plus years, and show that the pain does go down. And I think that does reflect how far behind we are. The $812,000 of, of needs is, is clearly how far behind we are. Then staff also went through the work of developing, whittling down to what do we really need to live by? And the $336,000, I assume, is a part of the bigger 812?
Correct, yes.
Well, that's good, Dave, so that makes that smaller. And I think we need to move on that stuff right away. What frustrates me is we're in the same situation again with the patrol cars, for example, because they are a specialty item, and even, even maybe one or two of these public works trucks, there's a long lead time on them. And so do we go now? Do we tell, go with whatever lease financing we might get? I know that, that we looked at the Auburn Police Department and how they're doing it. Or do we let our staff develop an in-house leasing program? And I'm already worried that our first-floor finance staff is overworked, and, and I don't want to think that I'm saving dollars and I still haven't gotten these police cars ordered two or three months from now, because we think we might be able, and it's very, it's excellent that we're being diligent, but at a point, we, we need to have the cars on the street. Because it's going to take us six months from tonight to get them. The costs are just continuing to go up on all of this stuff, you know, which is something that, you know, when we talked about this in June, the price for a unit was probably X, and I was X plus something now. And it'll be that in three months from now, and, you know, heaven help us if there's another tariff war or whatever goes on. So I'm, I appreciate all this, and I'm hoping that at the next meeting, we can take some immediate action and we can get clarification, so we can get all these items on their way.
Great, all right.
Mr. Clarici?
Well, I looked at it oddly.
I thought I heard the city manager say that if, I go, maybe in two weeks, we would say, "Make it so."
Two weeks, yes.
Oh, okay.
Well, I don't think that's a terribly long time.
No, I'm just worried, I'm just worried about the financing with the police vehicles.
But we would probably, somebody up here will say, "Yes." And then the financing will be backfilled, is kind of what, I, that's my understanding, correct?
Yeah, just so you know, to obtain, if we go out on a capital lease, that will probably take us six to eight weeks minimum. Is that a good estimate, Dave? So, but, one of the things Dave and I talked about recently was, if we know we're moving forward in that manner, couldn't we go ahead potentially and order the, the police cars, the vehicles?
Right, right, right.
That have that long lead time, even before we have the capital lease secured? Because we know we'll have it before we get the vehicles and actually need to run it. So, so there's potential for some things that we could do in that area, but it will take some time to go through that process and get the capital lease completed.
Because, I mean, the, the, the financing part of it, I mean, we could buy, I'm sorry, Dave, I don't want to send you into a conniption, but we could buy the vehicles. You could, you could write the big check and buy them and say, "Yeah, go orders three vehicles." And then the lease comes in, and then we, we do the financing, I mean, a lot of people do that.
Put the financing on it.
Yeah, that's it. I've bought cars with cash and then gone and gotten a loan and gotten paid back. I mean, every, you know, people do that, so I know, isn't that amazing?
Yeah, and so I think that the direction of Council is, we all are in consensus to move forward as, as quickly as possible.
Quickly as possible, right.
You know, with, with these items.
One last question after.
Yes.
Would we be looking at leasing the five pickup trucks that are proposed, the five Ford pickup trucks?
Correct, that are on the, the list, in the purple bars, correct.
That would be the same process?
Well, except for the one that we're proposing that's in here that is an urgent need that we would probably do more quickly.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
At this point, I'd like to open up for public comment on this item.
I just had a couple of questions. One is that, on, on the computers, I know this is a small item, but I happened to be at OfficeMax yesterday looking at desktops, and one with all the bells and whistles, about eight megabytes and six megabytes of memory and all that. And they didn't come close to 2,300 apiece, so I just wondered how you arrived at that figure and what else it includes. The other question is, I'm just curious about the brand. I can understand that in a fleet of trucks, you'd want all the same kind, makes things easier, like a Dodge. But when you're ordering trucks, does it have to be a Ford versus Chevy versus a GMC or Dodge? And I assume there's special law enforcement reasons for the Charger, but it'd be just helpful to hear it. Those are the thoughts that came to my mind, I was just curious about them. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, we'll bring this back to the Council for action. Any further discussion or motion? Do you have any, would you like some clarity on that? Okay.
Yeah, our computer cost for a normal desktop is $977. If that's incorrect, Jason, step out here and tell me, but that's what we have, we're looking at $977 for a desktop computer.
Okay.
And the, the vehicles, we, we have maintenance people that maintain the vehicles, and it is easier in maintaining parts and et cetera to stick to one brand, and that's why we generally look at the Fords, is what we generally, yeah.
All right.
And Fords are the best truck.
Right. Well, with.
Just want to say, I, I drive a Toyota, so I'm not just saying, but yeah, Ford's.
So do you, do we need an, an action item in this?
Is this a motion?
I, I don't think we really need an action item, just your consensus that we're moving in the right direction. I think that's what I, that's what I've heard so far.
Move forward in a bold direction, yes, all right. Great.
Okay, thank you.
That's great. Super. All right, now we are on Council reports. El Dorado Transit.
I wasn't there.
Vice Mayor Acuna?
I will try and be brief. The, the biggest issue was the Apple Hill Shuttle, and the pros and cons, and the quality of the service, the fact that there won't be any grant funding available next year for it. The supervisors were especially concerned, and rightfully so, that there was a big subsidy going on for some of the, the ranch operations up there. And there was, what, 700, there was a lot of money, because the highway patrol costs when, you know, there were cost overruns.
Huge.
With the highway patrol and the flagging company, that all eventually provided a better experience, but the county, I think, is going to be seriously looking at whether they can afford to do that again next year.
At what cost?
And so, yeah.
I asked how much, I asked how much the Apple Hill, the grow, the growers are contributing. They're nothing.
They're nothing.
So that doesn't make sense.
Wow.
You know?
Interesting. All right, Transportation Commission. Councilmember Clarici, would you like to, wasn't anything really critical?
No, yeah, there was nothing, nothing, yeah.
All right, LAFCO.
It was right.
Vice Mayor Acuna?
We have not met.
Actually, Transportation Commission.
Okay. And Councilmember Clarici, thoughts on transportation and SACOG?
Well, the only thing we did, the only thing we talked, well, Transportation Commission, although, although we did talk about was Proposition 6.
Oh, that's right.
Which, of course, did not pass. And I know for some folks around here, that was a horrible thing, but honestly, for the city of Placerville, it's about another three or, potentially about 300,000, 200, 300, 400,000 dollars, kind of depends over the, you know, once it finally ramps up, of absolutely must needed money for roads. And so, you know, whatever you might, nobody likes taxes, nobody likes taxes, but.
We've been paying them and they're, it's.
Yeah, that's the other thing, too, is, the, the price of a barrel of oil has dropped from $77 to $55 as of today. It's done it all in six weeks. And you'll see a much greater change in the price of gas in that than you'll ever see in a gas tax moving one way or the other. And so, and so that was the big topic of discussion. Of course, the election hadn't happened yet, so I guess that's the one thing to report out. Obviously, Prop 6 failed, and, and we will be seeing more money, and it'll augment Mezrel, which is really important. That's a very important thing for the city, to get that money to be able to pave roads and fix things and stuff. So anyway, that is that. And then the other one was?
SACOG, I mean.
That is not.
Anything to report to SACOG? Councilmember Saragosa?
Just a, a quick on SB 1, on the, on the no-on-6, and that, just for everyone to know as well, it's 50% of the money on SB 1 goes to local locals. And so it's not just our highway system, it's to local roads, it's to us, it's to every other local road out there. So there really isn't, there wasn't a Plan B on this, and so we will all be thankful to have that additional funds in addition to L out there for our roads.
And, and I understand the skepticism of the public, because for decades, the legislature's been raiding like the state highway account and never putting the money back. And Caltrans wasn't paving roads. If Caltrans had been doing, for the last 20 years, what they did in the last year with SB 1 money, we wouldn't be having this discussion, because people would have faith in them to fix the roads and getting the money that they're paying at the pump and in other places. But, you know, this, this, I mean, it, I drove back, I drove, I drove in the middle of nowhere, from Susanville to the state line, and it was like the smoothest highway I'd ever been on, and it was all paved in the last six months. I mean, it's great, because you, like, it's really good on your tires and stuff.
And there's a nexus to the funding, that those who are using our roads are paying to repair and maintain them, which makes sense.
And what we don't talk about is that a year ago, I mean, two years ago, there was a ballot measure that guaranteed.
That's right.
This money cannot be raided. It can't be used for any other purpose, so.
So that makes sense.
And that's a very good point. But on the other hand, I understand the public skepticism, because they've been told more than once over the last 20 years, "Oh, no, this money is safe now, we've, we've written this," so that, and then, then those guys down in Sacramento just like taking it.
I don't think there was a ballot measure, though, guaranteeing it. I don't know.
All right, well, with, no two-by-two. So with that, request for future agenda items. Do my fellow council members have any requests?
I had a couple.
All right, Vice Mayor Acuna?
One is just to make sure, is PG&E going to be at the next meeting?
I have not heard a response back, and then I will follow up on that with them tomorrow.
Because I would really like to make sure.
The plan is to have a summary of that event on that meeting and invite them, so.
Based on the events that didn't happen, before the big fire started, there was another windstorm. And, I mean, their whole system is just, I don't know.
Although, given the recent, you know, events.
Yeah, we need to continue to keep pushing. I think we need to make sure, I know Cleve has gone through the effort to register us through the PUC so that we can be a member to the testimony against what occurred in October 14th and that whole event, so.
My only caution is, is that we don't know what the, how the campfire was started.
No, and I don't have any intention of going there.
But my, my thought is, is if we are to embark on this discussion with PG&E, while they are very still much in the discovery phases of this, you know, devastation in our neighboring city, it, it may change the, the discussion.
And if it's a public meeting, there's people in the public.
They still have hundreds of thousands of dollars of losses that occurred in Placerville and El Dorado County due to the power being off at a time where it never met their own criteria.
I understand that.
With lost wages, product, lost productivity, emergency responses, and they need to be answering to what they did on October 14th.
Now, I understand that, I understand that, but I, I, I think I would, I would prefer that, that the Council address it, let, let the dust settle, you know, let, let PG&E go through their process that they're dealing with right now, and then we can have, you know, a discussion on, on the merits of, of October 14th, rather than the very highly emotional time where we are very still much, you know, in the midst of crisis.
Well, I was under the impression that they had prepared and had filed with the CPUC a response related to the October 14th incident. And that would be the information they would be bringing to us.
Right.
Well, Cleve, we, oh, excuse me, we watched that video, and they did talk a lot about what had, didn't, I, I mean, I'm thinking we're going to get that same message that they presented.
So what is the will of the Council on the timing of this discussion?
I'm willing to wait. I, I do think it's, I do think it's, I think, I do think they should come and speak to us, so.
Definitely.
But I'm willing to wait. I have another request on this, but I'll, I'll let this discussion.
And I would suggest, this is one of those things where the holidays do matter, I would suggest that you put it out, I mean, now granted, if you tell the city folks in town here that there's going to be someone from PG&E at a meeting, it could be on Christmas Eve, and they'll show up, because they're going to want to talk to that guy or gal. But it might not be a bad idea if you, unless it can be that first meeting in December, which is kind of a sweet spot for things, people aren't quite consumed by the holidays, then it's got to go into January, because otherwise there won't, well, there isn't going to be a second meeting, and, and then the January meeting might be the first one, when you'll be able to get really the folks to, to, to be thinking about it. So I would, you know, so I think you only got one window, and that's that first meeting in December, otherwise you got to flop it over.
And my understanding that, that the next meeting in November is rather impacted at this point, which could be, you know, I think we want to give this discussion the time it's due. That's my feeling.
Yes, exactly. And then maybe present, because admittedly, we had some errors, too.
We did, yes.
And so I think everything, we, we need to get the whole picture.
Well, it was a learning experience, no doubt, yeah, which, yeah.
We aren't the ones that shut the power off.
Councilmember Saragosa?
I had one other thing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Pardon me.
Pardon me.
Oh, gosh.
Okay.
I'd be happy to move it to December, Cleve.
December or the first meeting or January?
We, we could, we could do December also. I have a concern about December, because that's going to be probably council transition.
Yeah, there's a lot going on there.
And some other ceremonial items with employees that are leaving us, we won't name anybody, but.
Yeah.
Don't name anybody.
As where, as well as employee service awards, it's kind of, we kind of try to keep that to a more of a ceremonial. I'm not trying to put it back, if you wanted on that day, we can do it, but I just want to remind you, that's what we normally do on that meeting in December.
I think the first meeting in January would be more appropriate.
Or the second, whatever.
Or in January, a January meeting.
That's fine, that's fine. They're not going anywhere.
I was going to add, too, to look, find out if they have new information on the October 14th event and their process, because supposedly they have learned from that.
Sure.
It was obvious, wasn't it, this last?
My other thing was, a request for a Clay Street, the Clay Street project, get an update on it. and against it need to know where that is and what our latest timeline is.
I'd sure like to know.
So, under a staff report mark?
Whatever would be most appropriate to give the public an opportunity to just see where it's at.
Okay, on the process.
Yeah.
All right. Sounds good.
Yeah, that's fine.
Councilmember Saragusa?
Well, I may have start a, I don't know, I may get some people's attention here, we'll see, but I'd like to, at a date to be determined, but, because I think this is a long-term discussion, but I would like to look at the idea of talking with S-Mud about our utility contracting here in Placerville. I think it's a worthwhile discussion, I think it's something that actually LAFCO can do, and I'd love to have that discussion on the table. I think it could be good for our residents, I think anything that provides reliability and maybe lower prices, and I'm a free-market guy, I like to look at different items, you know, as opposed to just having one, one vendor in PG&E, so I would love to have that discussion.
I think it's a great idea, I think man the ramparts and get as many other places in the foothills to be part of this as humanly possible.
I think I would see that rather sooner than later.
A minor revolution would be good right now.
We can do that, we could do that in, discuss the possibilities of that early next year, very early next year.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I would like to do that.
Okay, great. City manager and staff reports, traffic calming measures, speed lumps, speed humps, and all of the, everything in between.
Lumps, humps, and bumps. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item is simply an informational item for you tonight. I know this came before you, or it was requested in September for us to take a look at our speed bump policy, which I think goes back to nineteen sixty-five or something like that.
Wow, yeah.
It's back their ways, anyway. And so, the purpose of this item is simply that, is to bring this back to you, to review the policy, and we've actually expanded it. Our recommendation is that rather than just a speed bump policy, we look at a traffic calming manual, which introduces several different ways of calming traffic, rather than just speed bumps or humps. And I talk about that because there are actually speed bumps, speed humps, and a new one I learned of now, speed lumps. So, there are several, several different ones that are, that are in there that have been used, and all of those would be addressed in this document, but there are also our other items that are, would be part of this document that could be considered. For example, the city has already used one of those, which is the bulbouts on Main Street. That's one of those traffic calming devices, which narrows down lanes and has a tendency to slow down traffic. So, that's one example of one that we have used already, and there are more that we can look at. So, our only purpose tonight is to show you, we are working on this, we're trying to get it done, to bring back to you, but if there's any comments you have, you can either give those to me tonight, or you can simply email me, call me, come and see me, we can go through this together and talk about other things you'd like to see, changes you'd like to see made, et cetera. But we will be continuing to work on this. My guess is that based on workload that we have, it will probably be closer to January before the final document comes back to you, but we will continue to work on this and bring it back to you for consideration.
I think we ought to request that we save these, so.
That's fine, if you can.
I mean, you know, yeah.
If you can, that would be great, yeah.
You know, I was going to say, too, when we did that, and I know it's in storage, the Placerville modal, multimodal plan.
Right.
There's a whole bunch of traffic calming things in that, that were suggested for Placerville Drive.
Right.
Yeah, that was good.
Most of them are incorporated in here, yeah.
Most of those, I think, are incorporated in here, but I can take a look at that, I have that.
They are, yeah. And I understand Erin worked on this?
Erin, my secretary, actually did most of the revisions. We took this from another community, obviously, we didn't create it ourselves.
Well, I think she did a really good job.
She did a lot of the work.
Right. Would like to thank Erin for that. Yes, Councilmember Clarici?
I'd need to bring everybody's attention to page twenty-eight.
What is page twenty-eight?
Well, I just think it's not a good thing.
Well, it's a roundy thing.
Yes.
Oh, my God, no way.
I don't know, we'd have to put a line with a circle and.
We'd kill everybody in Placerville.
No, this is actually a serious thing. You know, the folks in town here outlawed these things without a vote, so, I mean, I, this is, this is.
No, you're right.
This is antithetical, this is antithetical to the will of the people, so I'm just saying, it's.
Or maybe you make a caveat of that.
I think that we would have that language in there. They didn't outlaw them, they just said, before you can do them, you have to get a vote.
Yes, then we should, we need to put that language in there. I know Pierre's upset with me now, but I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you need to